Take your seats, please. Thank you for being here this evening. Welcome to the December Board of Education meeting. We are glad you are all here, and there's a lot of folks here. Before we begin, I'd like to share a few reminders. Please keep the aisles clear during the meeting to allow members of our school system and the Sheriff's Department to be able to move about. Also, except for when honoring our flag, our opening prayer, and when participating in the call to the audience, remain seated during the meeting. We hope to have a productive and efficient meeting, and as usual, your help is greatly appreciated. So, thank you for all being here, for everybody being here. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Good evening. Pete Wildebohr.
Present.
Pat Bradford.
I am here.
Josie Barnhart.
Here.
Stephanie Craybill.
Here.
Melissa Mason.
Here.
He McManus.
Here.
And Stephanie Walker.
She can't vote.
And Melissa Mason.
Me again?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The other two of you? No. Well, again, thank you for being here today. Our next motion, or our next bit of business is approval of the agenda. Before we begin, our Assistant Superintendent has shared with me we need to pull consensus item A, consideration of bids for Holly Tree HVAC replacement. So, please cross through that, board members, we'll be pulling that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Bradford.
I move that we open the agenda to have an info discussion about Mosley School.
Okay. We have a motion to discuss Mosley School. Is there a second? We have a second for Ms. Wa- I think that was Ms. Second, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. We have a second for Ms. Walker. Discussion? No discussion? All in favor, please, yes, ma'am? Ms. Craybill?
So, what did we intend on getting from this discussion, given just information that we have received over the past couple days?
Ms. Bradford?
I would think that the people who have come here tonight would like to hear what's going on with Mosley and how it came about, and give them some comfort on the questions that they have. I can't give it to them because I didn't know it, so I'm hoping that we can, as a board, can help them get to a better place tonight.
Thank you.
Why don't we allow 10 minutes? First off, let's see if we vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and thumbs up over there.
Aye.
And aye. Passes seven to zero. Let's put that under new business, and we'll allot 10 minutes for that. Ms. Mason.
I'd like to make a motion to add EDI committee to new business, as was voted in the agenda review meeting on 10/30/23.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Barnhart. Discussion? Ms. Craybill?
So, under new business is appropriate, also under committee reports is appropriate, but the EDI committee met last night and voted to not, to keep the committee alive, and to keep it in committee to talk and get more questions answered. So, I don't think it's appropriate for us to deny their voice and have the discussion at this point.
Okay. All right. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? If not, we're gonna go ahead and do a roll call, please. Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Bradford?
Aye.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
No, was that a no? Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Craybill?
No.
That passes five to two, so we will add that as item B under new business, also allotting 10 minutes for that. Okay. Any other additions?
Yes.
Ms. Craybill?
I'd like to add policy 2315 invocation policy before board meetings to the agenda under policy.
Under policy? Okay, 2315, is there a second? Is that a second? Okay. I gotta, I'm sorry, it'll take me a little bit to get used to. Yes, second. We have a first and second. Any discussion? Ms. Bradford?
Mr. Chair, this is a personal attack on me, and it's the third time it's come before the board, and I protest largely that we would hear this again.
Okay.
Just FYI, I didn't say anybody's name.
You did not. You did not. Any other discussion? If not, Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll? This is to add policy 2315 invocation policy to our policy.
Is this for discussion only?
It would actually, it would be under a motion. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Craybill?
Yeah, the point there, Ms. Mason, was that when we had this discussion several times, and we took out line five in its entirety, the, my bad, I forgot to, my motion should have been, in the absence of someone signed up, then we will observe a moment of silence. And because we discussed it, I was just thinking I'd said it. So, what we did was take out the whole line, and I am looking for us to put the line back in that says, if no one signs up for, to talk, then we would have a moment of silence. And the reason for that is because if we don't have any words in there, we are silent on the action, and we could easily be accused of discriminating against people in the audience or offending people in our audience by having one of us given invocation.
Okay.
And I'm trying to avoid that litigation.
Thank you, Ms. Craybill. Any other discussion? If not, Ms. Bowie, please call the roll.
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebohr?
No.
Ms. Mason?
No.
Ms. Walker?
Is that a yes? Ma'am, I got started.
And Ms. Craybill?
Yes.
That is defeated, four to three, so we will not be adding that. Any other discussion, or any other motions? If not?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to reference the email that I sent out to the board with policy 1310/4002 parental involvement. I forgot to bring that up at the agenda review, that we would have to have a specially called meeting. So, when I was prepping for the policy committee meeting this week, Dr. Faust and staff had said they would be comfortable bringing it before the board for a vote, if we wanted it to. Personally, I am in favor of having a specially called meeting, but I wanted it to be the will of the board, if we wanted to add it to this night's meeting and approve the recommendations from NCSBA.
And you did say policy 1310, correct? Okay.
I'll second that. Yes.
We have a first and second. Any discussion?
What was the motion again?
To add policy 1310 to discussion under policy.
Can we, can I amend that motion to say, and decide at the time whether we're gonna vote? I mean, something to that effect, because everybody just got it, and I don't know that everybody read it and understands what's in it. So, I think that we should probably have a chance to digest it a little bit.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bobo?
Well, I'd say, I think it's a motion to add an item to the agenda that seconded. I don't really understand, propose a motion to amend.
To hold off on voting until a later time, discuss?
Well, the motion would be, the item would be under policy, so it's a matter that, you know, could be voted on at this meeting at the time that it comes up, assuming it makes it to the agenda. You could always move to postpone to a later date.
So, is that germane, or?
No. Okay. All right. Yes, sir.
So, if we don't add it tonight, vote, then we've gotta have another meeting before the 15th.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
But, that means I would need to get everyone's calendar before, and I'll be honest, before we make, before you vote on this, we would need to check your calendars, because we would have to, we have to act. I mean, part of it is already enacted, there's like three, not three, three or four bullets that we've added.
Okay. I guess I'm just kind of annoyed that the policy committee didn't see this earlier.
My question is, when's the next policy meeting again? And this is gonna be discussed at the policy meeting?
Gonna break it down.
And be, have it be broken down, step by step, what needs to happen, when it needs to happen, and that's happening at the next policy meeting, correct?
Well, a couple things. So, the policy committee, we did speak with the chair. Prior to all the seasonal events that are going on, we were gonna have a special call meeting. It's December. We had written all of the policies that are, that need to be in it, not policies, all of the lines that need to be in it. What we'll be doing at the policy meeting is going over the website that will go into effect. We'll be talking through more of how parents go through it, but the policies, the majority of the policies are already in place now that we're doing. They're just about three or four bullets that we added to it. And so, it was honestly just to respectful of everyone's time, that's all it was.
Ms. Bradford?
And as I understand it, we're doing this so that we can be compliant with the law. So, I am going to vote to do it tonight.
Okay. Any other, Mr. McManus?
We need to let them proceed.
We shouldn't be much longer, so, yeah. All right. All in favor of adding policy 1310, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
No. Yes.
We have six to one, and you're up. Six to one? Okay, so we add 1310 to the policy area. Any others? If not hearing none?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the amended agenda.
Okay. I'll second that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Passes again. I did not hear Ms. Barnhart?
Aye.
Aye. So, that passes six to one. We will carry on with the invocation. I would invite Gail Tabor, Senior Pastor of Salt Inclusive Methodist Community Church, to provide our invocation this evening. Pastor?
Holy One, today we gather to do the work of providing for the education of all children in New Hanover County. We pause to remember at this time to be grateful. And as we go into this season of Hanukkah, Yule, Christmas, and Kwanzaa, may we find love and respect as our guide in all that we do and all that we say. We give thanks for the absolute joy that there is in living in this beautiful place called New Hanover County. And we give you thanks for the beauty of creation and for our mandate to care for all that you have made, especially our children, who are often the least among us. We pray for the safety of all of our students and all of our teachers and all of our administrators. Guide us as we face times of uncertainty and fear that our choices and our vision will ever be toward all, and especially to those who are most vulnerable. May our decisions be made here to be inclusive and equitable. Even when we have differences of opinion, give us a unity of spirit. Help us to not listen as others, to not just listen as others share their point of view, but to hold them in full regard for their, for our shared humanity. Aid this body to work as a unified team as they lead New Hanover County schools, and may every child and every family know their worth and their value to this body and to the community at large. In our ever-changing world, we pray for these board members, for all the various level of official and staff who serve New Hanover County. We pray your blessings on this body and their decisions, that they would benefit all who work, all who tend, and all, for all children and persons whom are cared for by New Hanover County schools. In all the names of the One we call holy. Amen.
Thank you. The Ashley High School NJ ROTC Color Guard Unit will provide the presentation of colors. It's under the direction of Lieutenant Colonel Robert Rayer and Master Chief Matthew Champs, Principal Michael Perez. And our national anthem will be performed tonight by the Williston Middle School Band. They will do the national anthem under the direction of Austin Hinson, Principal Ms. Jo McDonald.
Left turn, march. Foul, foul. Freezing. Foul.
This time we ask our board member, Ms. Mason, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Ms. Mason?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right turn, march. Foul, foul. March.
I'd like to ask the color guard to come back when they get a chance, and also, if you would introduce your wonderful group here.
All right. Thank you. Hi, thank you so much. My name is Austin Hinson. I'm the band teacher at Williston Middle School. And I would just like to thank the school board for having us here. It's a great opportunity to be here. In front of you guys, we have six of my most dedicated eighth grade students. We have Shelby Blake playing the flute, Brenna Kavanaugh playing the flute, Christian Favors playing the clarinet, Madrid Shorts playing the trumpet, Sawyer Burrow playing the trumpet, and Andrew Whittington playing the trombone. These kids have worked very hard. We've actually been, thank you. And they've dedicated a lot of time outside of school to try to make this happen, so I'm very thankful to be working with them and to be here tonight. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And if the color guard would introduce themselves, please?
Thank you. I'm Cadet Kendall McNamara, I am a junior.
I'm Cadet Sophia Beazey, and I am a junior. I'm Cadet Reese Ingram, I'm a freshman.
I'm Cadet Kelsey McNamara, and I'm a freshman.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I've gotten a report that the mics are too low and Josie's too loud.
Okay. Can we, if we could rectify that, please? Our mics are too low and Ms. Barnhart is too loud. All right. We're gonna carry on. Next, we have student voice. So, if our student voice folks would like to come forward, please. Welcome, welcome.
Good evening, board members. My name is Willian Rumpel, and I'm a junior at New Hanover.
I'm a part of Billy Paula, and I'm a junior at Hogard. It's great to see all of you, and as always, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak and collaborate with you all. We sincerely appreciate all the work that you do to support and advocate for students. In our meeting this month, our team has undergone training for public speaking, levels of educational decision-making, and how and why to invite in conversations with people of different backgrounds and perspectives. Recently, we split into small groups of three or four to research topics that students are passionate about with discussing at student board meetings, or projects and ideas for our groups to take on. Students research overcrowding in schools, student mental health, and current topics of discussion like book banning and policy 7205. Two research topics our group was specifically passionate about have been banned books and the implications of policy 7205. As students who are directly impacted by these decisions, we believe that it's crucial to offer our perspective. So, over the coming month, our focus will be on an extensive information gathering initiative that encompasses all of the schools within our group. This effort includes engaging both teachers and students to ensure a broad range of perspectives. We are currently developing a systematic approach for this data collection process, which will be carefully designed to capture a comprehensive and nuanced understanding of the issues at hand. Our goal is to not only provide a thorough analysis of the current situation, but also to propose potential solutions for further discussion.
As we go along with this research process, we have a few requests. Firstly, would it be possible for us to sit in on the next policy meeting where policy 7205 is being discussed, so we can take notes? And additionally, we would greatly appreciate if you could provide us with resources, research, or materials that you guys have previously used in your policy discussions for this. Thank you for your time and consideration. We eagerly anticipate the opportunity to share our findings and engage in meaningful discussions with you in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so those were our two questions. As we're researching these topics that our group was passionate about, just bringing lots of student perspectives to you as you're making these decisions. So, yeah, our questions that Solomon said were, if we, if it's possible for us to sit in at the next policy meeting where policy 7205 is being discussed, so that's our first question, I guess we'll ask.
Well, that, you know, the policy meetings are all open to the public, but I believe you're in school at that time, so it would be a concern.
Is it, the next one, it's every like two weeks in the month, right? So, we may be, it may be a teacher workday that day, is what we were thinking, if it was, no? There's also several of us that don't have classes, like we have free period or an online class where we could come. Not our whole team, but we just want a few of us to be there to be able to take notes and see it as it's happening.
Well, I would also note, you know, let you, remind you that it is available online, so you could definitely, if you did have free period, you could maybe go to the library and pull it up, and, you know, not trying to dissuade you from being there, but school is, I mean, kinda comes first. Dr. Faust, you wanna speak to that? What are your thoughts?
Well, I was leaving it to the board.
Okay.
I don't have, I mean, I meet with them, so I know exactly, you know, how we rock and roll, but definitely, you know, if it's the will of the board for them to be there, we will, more than like, I mean, we'll more than definitely welcome them.
Ms. Craybill?
Just, given the fact that we don't normally talk to the call to the audience people, so don't all of you come up and ask for, to answer a question, please. But, the policy committee was on a teacher workday, and it got moved, so it is next Tuesday. And you're always welcome at any meeting, online or in person, and it's up to you as the grown-up students that you are to make those arrangements as appropriate for your schedule.
Mr. McManus?
Given the valuable arena, the students put their time and their effort and really try to understand and to work with everyone, and make sense of a lot of what we can't make sense of up here sometimes, I would definitely support them being able to go to that meeting. I think that would be a very educational opportunity for you, because that's where every single policy begins. Absolutely.
And Ms. Walker also letting you know that she supports that.
I would like you to.
Well, we will, would someone like to make a motion, maybe? Because I think it is a situation there in school, so.
I'll make a motion.
I don't think we should make a motion on that topic, because it's not up to us to say they can come and dictate to their principal or their teacher that they're out of school. So, I think they should just make that choice, that call on their own, and be any, like a member of the public, and come like any member of the public. You manage your schedule and handle any of the consequences that come from management of schedule that might not have been appropriate. Okay?
Mr. McManus?
But Superintendent said that he would, he would agree with the will of the board, which I appreciate. So, again, I think it'd be a great opportunity for you to attend.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you so much. We're super excited this month to research these topics, get lots of student perspectives and teachers' perspectives, utilizing all the students on our team to interview a lot of students and figure out what a lot of people feel about this. So, we're excited to bring this back to you in January, all of our research, and yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for all you're doing. Next, we have teacher voice. And next, we have our teacher voice, so, welcome, welcome.
Good evening. Hope everyone is well. My name is Courtney Malahias, and I teach first grade at Anderson Elementary. Before this, I taught eight years at Snipes Academy of Arts and Design. I was the New Hanover County School Elementary Teacher of the Year during the 2021-2022 school year. Today, I want to share with all of you what it means to be a teacher, and how vital it is to lead by focusing on the student first, and having a growth mindset, not only for the student, but for yourself as an educator. Teaching involves so much more than just standards in our curriculum. I am sure you have heard that teachers wear a lot of hats, and it's true. I am absolutely the CEO of my classroom. I am a psychologist, I am a nurse, I am many other things. But the most important hat that I put on each day is the how will I respond hat. How will I respond to a child who comes off the bus and is angry and wants everyone to know it? How will I respond when two children are arguing over a pencil? How will I respond when children use unkind words? These are situations out of our control. When our control, where our control comes in is how will I respond? Listening, seeking to understand, and using language like you were hoping or you were disappointed because helps the child to be able to express their needs. Asking them, is it helpful or hurtful to our class family? Giving two positive choices instead of one positive and one negative always helps them. I'm at my fourth elementary school in my 15th year as an educator. I spent at two schools, I was a parent educator, and at two schools, I am a teacher. Before that, I owned and operated my own restaurant for 20 years, and I really thought I knew how to respond. I dealt with customers, employees, and I dealt with my husband, who was my partner. So, I really thought that I had a handle on how to respond. But when I became a teacher, I truly realized that responding to children takes a lot more focus. You have to help them believe in themselves. They are watching your response to them through your body language and the words that you use, and these things matter. Teaching at a high-poverty school with a high population of children who come from trauma made me dive deep down into myself. I needed to figure out a different way. Punishment consequences are not effective. I found the Adult First Trauma Informed Program called Conscious Discipline, and things started changing in a really big way. I started studying our brain and how complicated and miraculous it is. I started incorporating this mindset daily into my teachings, having a quiet chime time to glitter our brains, teaching the children about their brain and how important self-talk is. I found a book that has become a mainstay, mainstay called The Bubblegum Brain by Julia Cook. The children really get it. There is a boy that has a brick brain, fixed mindset, and a boy that has a bubblegum brain stretches his thinking and changes his thoughts by changing his cans to I can't yet. The boy with the brick brain realizes with the help of his friend that he can just peel off the wrapper, and voila, there is his bubblegum brain. How do you peel it off? By changing the thoughts you tell yourself, and this got me really thinking, so I created a ladder of success in my classroom, with the bottom ring labeled, I can't do it, to the top ring saying, I did it. Each rung is the color of the rainbow, and the children refer to it daily. I teach them that there will be times that you may fall off the ladder, but the important thing is, what do you need to get back on? What tools do you need? Breathing is always helpful, as are positive affirmations, and forgiveness for their negative thoughts that creep in. I have a quick story about how this came into play very recently. During open house, I had given each child a small jeweled pineapple. My theme is persistent pineapples, we never give up, and the children really connect to it. During a math lesson, a child who always gets her exit tickets right was really struggling during this one lesson. She was extremely upset that she did not get her exit ticket. She needed some guidance on how to handle her struggle. After using our distract your brain method, she was ready to breathe and keep trying. The next morning, when she came into school, I noticed the jeweled pineapple was on her name tag. I asked about it, curious, as to why it was there. She said, well, yesterday I was on the struggle bus, Ms. M, and I almost fell off the ladder. So, today I brought in my pineapple, which I keep on my nightstand, to remind me to stay persistent. Wow. She really stretched her brain. If I can impart the importance of mindset in a six-year-old, then I have truly done my job. We want our youth to be independent thinkers and prob- You have to help them believe in themselves. They are watching your response to them through your body language and the words that you use, and these things matter. Teaching at a high-poverty school with a high population of children who come from trauma made me dive deep down into myself. I needed to figure out a different way. Punishment consequences are not effective. I found the Adult First Trauma Informed Program called Conscious Discipline, and things started changing in a really big way. I started studying our brain and how complicated and miraculous it is. I started incorporating this mindset daily into my teachings, having a quiet chime time to glitter our brains, teaching the children about their brain and how important self-talk is. I found a book that has become a mainstay, mainstay called The Bubblegum Brain by Julia Cook. The children really get it. There is a boy that has a brick brain, fixed mindset, and a boy that has a bubblegum brain stretches his thinking and changes his thoughts by changing his cans to I can't yet. The boy with the brick brain realizes with the help of his friend that he can just peel off the wrapper and voila, there is his bubblegum brain. How do you peel it off? By changing the thoughts you tell yourself, and this got me really thinking, so I created a ladder of success in my classroom, with the bottom ring labeled, I can't do it, to the top ring saying, I did it. Each wrong is the color of the rainbow, and the children refer to it daily. I teach them that there will be times that you may fall off the ladder, but the important thing is, what do you need to get back on? What tools do you need? Breathing is always helpful, as are positive affirmations and forgiveness for their negative thoughts that creep in. I have a quick story about how this came into play very recently. During open house, I had given each child a small jeweled pineapple. My theme is persistent pineapples. We never give up, and the children really connect to it. During a math lesson, a child who always gets her exit tickets right was really struggling during this one lesson. She was extremely upset that she did not get her exit ticket. She needed some guidance on how to handle her struggle. After using our distract your brain method, she was ready to breathe and keep trying. The next morning when she came into school, I noticed the jeweled pineapple was on her name tag. I asked about it, curious as to why it was there. She said, well, yesterday I was on the struggle bus, Ms. Sam, and I almost fell off the ladder. So today I brought in my pineapple, which I keep on my nightstand, to remind me to stay persistent. Wow, she really stretched her brain. If I can impart the importance of mindset in a six-year-old, then I have truly done my job. We want our youth to be independent thinkers and problem solvers. If they can find the awareness to self-regulate when their emotions go astray, then they can change their thoughts to help them become more successful in the classroom and out in the world. How we respond to situations and to the children during their learning is imperative. As like in an, an airplane emergency, we have to put our mask on first. Telling ourselves that we can handle this and breathing before responding has changed my teaching practices. A child's brain struggles to learn if they're operating from the lower part of their brain. So I swoop in and glitter their brain with all these practices so that they can receive what I need them to. It is a win-win, because life is all about our mindset. We can change our thinking, and I believe in all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. It always warms my heart to hear a great teacher talking about a great classroom. And speaking of great things, let's talk about our recognitions.
Good evening. Before I begin, I wanted to welcome from our community partner, the Carousel Center, Rebecca Jackson and Amy Feath, who asked to be here tonight to make an important announcement about our district.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. My name is Rebecca Martin. I work with the Carousel Center. We started a prevention and education initiative last year, and I wanted to highlight the achievements that we have been able to accomplish as a community, very much elevated by the efforts that you all have put in through New Hanover County Schools District. So we are very, very proud to announce that New Hanover County Schools has officially been recognized as a partner in prevention, becoming the only district in North Carolina to hold this distinction. District leadership has made a very bold commitment to eliminating opportunities for abuse to occur within their schools by providing stewards of children, child sexual abuse prevention training, to all faculty and staff members. They also conducted environmental scans of their facilities to assess for risk, and they ensured that their child protection policies incorporate all of the best practices. But New Hanover County Schools not only empowered its professionals to champion safer environments for children, they also integrated this very training into their newly-launched Parent Academy. This innovative approach ensures that parents and caregivers gain easy access to the same high-quality education and resources, fostering a community that is committed to the well-being of children. The CEO of Darkness to Light wanted to reach out and highlight this accomplishment. She stated, "We are delighted to welcome New Hanover County School District as Darkness to Light's newest partner in prevention. To date, New Hanover County School District is the largest school district in North Carolina to achieve this partner in prevention designation. Forty-five schools and over 2,800 dedicated employees have committed to building a prevention-oriented community that will keep children safe. These remarkable leaders in education have been trained to prevent, to recognize, and to react responsibly to child sexual abuse. This outstanding effort will undoubtedly pave the way for creating safe environments in New Hanover County for generations to come." The ripple effects from this accomplishment have already been seen locally. Your staff members who have been trained have taken this training and this information into all the realms of their influence, because they're not just educators, they're not just New Hanover County School District's professionals, their parents, their family members, their mentors, their safe adults, their leaders. And they have promoted this training, and they've opened the door for us to get in to train adults in so many other sectors that we otherwise wouldn't have reached. So I want to take a moment and just really express our sincere gratitude for that invaluable work that you have undertaken within our school system. Again, not only for the students that you serve, but also the exemplary standard that you are setting for other educational institutions and youth-serving organizations to emulate. New Hanover County Schools' investment in child sexual abuse prevention education is already generating positive impacts. I have been contacted by leaders throughout the state. I've con, been contacted by leaders in other, other states in our nation. We are now working on a framework to unify efforts across child advocacy centers in North Carolina, and the work that y'all have done and the commitment you have made has helped to elevate that. So we want to sincerely thank you for that commitment. We also have a plaque to present to you to represent this commitment and welcome you officially as a partner in prevention.
Thank you so much. Our first recognition is tied to what you just heard Rebecca speak about. Tanya Jordan has spent her career protecting kids and safeguarding their mental health, and as she prepares for retirement, we're honored to present her with this next, next recognition. Ms. Jordan led the effort for New Hanover County Schools to be named the largest district in North Carolina to receive Partner in Prevention status, which trains adults in recognizing and preventing child sexual abuse. In partnership with the Carousel Center, Ms. Jordan assured that staff members at every one of our schools completed this intensive in-person training. It is not an easy subject to face, but Ms. Jordan was determined that we face it with thoroughness and fidelity and in a way that will change children's lives in our community. She said, "In the school system, we are our children's people. Being able to respond appropriately makes all the difference in whether or not that child gets justice. It's important that we say, I believe you, I'm here for you, I'm going to get you the help that you need." Thank you to Tanya Jordan for your service to our district and its children, and your commitment to justice, healing, and prevention. Please come forward to get your recognition.
Thank you.
All right. We've been on a roll celebrating academic excellence this fall, and we're excited to share that recently we learned that we had six schools recognized in the top 100 schools in the state of North Carolina by U.S. News &amp; World Report. They earned this recognition for showing high proficiency on state test scores, being high achieving, and succeeding at educating all of their students. These six schools are building cultures of excellence where students receive the support they need to reach their full potential. Congratulations to the principals and all staff at these exemplary schools. First is Wrightsfield Beach Elementary. Mr. Norville had a holiday PTA party this evening, and I said that sounded like a little more fun, so thank you for being here in his stead. Congratulations. Next up is Ogden Elementary. All right, Eaton Elementary. Congratulations. Holly Tree Elementary. Why don't we all just, yeah, just shift this way a bit? Congratulations. Cottington Elementary. Congratulations. And Noble Middle School. Congratulations to you all. Last month, Ms. Veda Keller dressed for her 90th birthday, as she does every weekday morning, in a fluorescent yellow reflective vest, ready to provide safe passage for Wrightsboro Elementary students across Castle Hayne Road. As a longtime crossing guard, Ms. Keller made a point, makes a point to know everything about the kids that she crosses and their mamas. She is the smiling face that first greets them at each school day, the guardian with a stop sign in hand, letting them know that they are welcome, cared for, and that someone's got their back. She might not technically be our employee, but we are very proud to call her our own. Thank you, Ms. Keller, for your service to our kids and your commitment to your post. Please come forward to accept your recognition. Thank you. Thank you so much. Next up is Cindy Hancock. Cindy's husband once accused her of getting paid to have fun at work. As an, I heard the OTs laughing in the back. As an occupational therapist for the last 34 years, her job might look like all fun and games if you just see her pinching Play-Doh with kids. But in fact, that's her tricky way of helping students develop the fine motor skills in their hands, so they can eventually hold a pencil and write and share their voice with the world. Occupational therapy gives students access to the full breadth of their education, Cindy says, and from there, they can go anywhere. Cindy recently received the award for Outstanding Practice in the Area of Developmental Disabilities from the North Carolina Occupational Therapy Association, in recognition of her passion and energy for her work, her mentorship of her team, and her leadership in the field. And while Cindy says that she was surprised and honored by the recognition, she added that it's hard to compete with the joy of seeing a student hold a pencil for the very first time. Thank you, Cindy, for your service to your students and for imparting, imparting them with the skills they need to learn with independence and pride and experience a success that every student deserves. And I think Cindy might have brought a posse tonight. Cindy, come on up to accept your recognition, please. Parental involvement often drops off in middle school, but TRASC PTA President Allison Childs has only doubled down. Whether she's dressing up their mascot Lloyd the Bear to attend a school board meeting, and you can find Lloyd seated adjacent to Ms. Walker and Mr. McManus tonight. Sending free pies home with every single staff member before Thanksgiving, or bringing in guest speakers and donations, Allison is all in for teachers and for that school. Principal Kim Clark shared that under Allison's leadership, PTA membership has grown from just six parents a few years ago to nearly 100 today. Ms. Clark says, "Not only does Allison contribute to the success of our school, but she also brings joy to the entire building. Words cannot express how grateful I am for everything Allison does." This is Allison's last year with a middle school student, but her legacy at TRASC will carry on in everything from the trees she helped plant to the way she made the staff there feel celebrated, supported, and valued. Thank you, Allison, for being the kind of parent every school cherishes. Please come accept your recognition. I was going to say there's no crying at recognitions, but that's a lie. I cry all the time at recognitions. At last month's meeting, we recognized the winners of our Board of Ed and Superintendent Choice Art Awards, but with the change of the meeting date, winner Bella DeMello was unable to make it, so we wanted to celebrate her here tonight. Bella's vibrant multimedia piece showing an elephant against an African sunset is on display just outside of Dr. Faust's office, so I'm one of the people lucky enough to be uplifted and inspired by it every day at work. Bella, we hope this is just the beginning of your artistic journey. Thank you for sharing your gifts with us. Please come forward to accept your recognition. Thanks for bringing that up.
Next, we have the administrative introductions. None, okay, so we'll skip over that. Superintendent's report is next. Exit stage right.
Yes. Good evening. Congratulations to Hoggard High School Varsity Football Team. They will play, they will be playing on Saturday, December 9th, for the state championship at Carter-Finley Stadium in Raleigh. Also, congratulations to Hoggard High School Varsity Cheerleaders. They placed third in the state at the North Carolina High School Association Cheer Competition on Saturday, December 2nd. Of course, we've recognized them, but I just wanted to reiterate, congratulations to the five elementary schools are in the top 100 for North Carolina Wrightsfield Beach, Ogden, Eden, Holly Tree, Cottington, Noble Maid, of course, the top 100 for North Carolina middle schools. Back in November, we hosted the North Carolina State Superintendent Catherine Truitt at the newly-open Spark NC Lab over at CTEC. She observed students gaining hands-on experiences and exploring STEM careers. New Hanover County Schools showcased the innovative New Hanover County Schools showcased the innovative CTE opportunities available. Last week, I attended the North Carolina School Superintendent's Association Winter Conference and presented on Focus on the Focus. The North Carolina School Association for Superintendents' Winter Conference was an opportunity for North Carolina school superintendents to gather and share innovative ideas and practices, receive timely updates regarding education policies, and expand their network with fellow superintendents. In September, Bellamy Elementary School was named the National Blue Ribbons School by the Department of Education. This was awarded to only eight schools in North Carolina. Principal Kirk Bird Kilpatrick, sorry, Assistant Principal Jennifer Rouser, and I were in DC on the 17th of November to accept the honor on behalf of New Hanover County Schools and Bellamy. We will also be traveling to Raleigh on Thursday for DPI to receive the state recognition letter from our state superintendent. So congratulations to all of the great things that are going on in our schools, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Faust. Next, we'll have the board chairman's report. First off, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year to one and all. Hope you enjoy this season. I send my best wishes and good luck to our Hoggard Vikings football team and Coach Underwood, bring home the big trophy. We are very proud of you all. Thanks to the board and to Dr. Faust for recent leadership training in Greensboro, be in the right place. Five of our board members were able to attend the training, which was extremely beneficial. We have one more day of training coming up, and we hope that all the board members will be able to attend that meeting. A big shout out to Bellamy Elementary School on being selected and recognized as National Blue Ribbon Award winner. Congratulations to the faculty, administration, students, and parents. I look forward to the Town Hall and Social Media Safety, which will be right here on December 11th. Finally, everyone in this dais took an oath to uphold the United States Constitution. I take this oath very seriously. I didn't put my hand on the Bible lightly, and I was privileged to join all elected officials, all law enforcement officers, including both my daughter and son-in-law, and all members of our armed forces, who all promised to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America, many of them risking their lives each and every day. Interestingly, a wonderful local member of the North Carolina Bar recently pointed out that the U.S. Constitution, which is a wonderful document, is a living document which is shown by the 27 amendments to it. It is the backbone of our wonderful country, which I thank God for, which is the land of the free and the home of the brave. Thank you very much. We will continue. We will continue with our call to audience, Ms. Bradford.
Good evening. If you're new to the call to audience, on these screens are going to be the list in the order that you come. We have a full list tonight. If someone's not here, I will circle back and get them at the end. You do not have to wait on me to call you. You can go ahead and move in that direction, and we're going to start off with Joe Conway.
So that clock's a real thing? We use it? It's already started. Well, good evening, New Hanover County Board members and Dr. Faust, our school superintendent. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak, so I'll be as brief as 1 minute and 45 seconds. I just want to let you know what I witnessed here tonight was outstanding from a diversity, equity, and inclusion standpoint. The title of what I was going to talk about tonight is called The Inclusion Dividend. I would ask that you read the book. It's written by Kaplan and Donovan. It has to do with corporate or corporations, but I think there's some applications for academia as well. And I could go through those illustrations, but it's probably better if you read the book and then call me. What I really want to do tonight is just tell you a little bit about what equity actually is and what equality is. So all of us have homes that we came up out of, right? All of us had siblings. All of us had those wonderful things called parents. And inside of that home, when it came to an equality standpoint, they gave us the same things: food, clothing, shelter, those types of things in order to actually survive and thrive and live. But then there was those other things called brothers and sisters, right? And as we had those brothers and sisters, we couldn't treat them all the same. I have four boys. I definitely could not treat them all the same. They all had different qualities and different capabilities, and so I had to treat them in a more equitable manner. So how's it that we can learn that in our homes, but we kind of forget it when we become adults? There are communities that are not as advantaged as other communities, some that have systemic barriers, some that have challenges. And how do we, just like in our own homes, as we watch our siblings and our parents provide for us, treat them equitably because we understand that not every child is the same thing? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. The Board of Education could vote tonight about dismantling the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Board Level Committee. They are ignoring data showing actionable disparities in discretionary discipline, blatant inequality in facilities, and gross gaps in academic performance. Right now, the DOJ is involved due to the obvious divestment in New Hanover High School's athletic facilities. There's a $5 million sanction against the New Hanover County Schools from the federal government. This is not ignorance. This is deliberate denial of the persistent documented injustices that impact Black students specifically. I have asked our community to sign an open letter starting today. I already have 50 names, and I'll continue to get them. Because in 2018, I began community conversations. I started coming here every single month to talk about the inequities in our schools, the segregation of our schools, and I had to cry out for something different. In 2019, we actually launched Community Conversations, when a Black child was the only child in her class not to receive a gift from her teacher at the holiday party. I've come to you before with horrible situations where children have been called names, where children have been slapped in the face. And the thought was, well, maybe this could be a learning experience. Well, you know who does that work? EDI. We need to learn proactively. We need to learn preventatively, and we need to mitigate the impacts of structural systemic violence that are not a figment of our imagination. They are hardcore facts. Black people in this country, like white people in this country, have 10 times less, 10 times more, the wealth of the average Black family. Black children are eight times more likely to be suspended than a white child. Performance disparities are real. There are, in all four high schools, the average performance grade for a white student was a B; for a Black student, it was a C.
Robert Bellamy, Mr. Bellamy, are you here? Rocky Jeter Webb.
Before I start, I just want to say this. This speech is rated CT for critical thought, compliance sheet my fans on my own, stressing logical questions and critical thinking throughout. The three-fifths rule for counting slaves is often misunderstood. When the Constitutional Convention debated the issue of how to count population for the purposes of representation, the Southern delegates to the convention would have been pleased if non-voting slaves had been counted as full persons. That way, the Southern states would have had a greater representation in the House of Representatives. In contrast, some Northern delegates resisted counting slaves at all. Why, asked Elbridge Gerry, should the Blacks who wear property in the South be in the rule of representation more than the cattle and horses of the North? Among other things, counting slaves provided an incentive to import still more slaves. No one was the three-fifths rule knew at the convention. It was derived from a mechanism adopted in 1783 to apportion requisitions, the national government's only revenue source, under the Articles of Confederation among the states. That rule was intended to provide rough equality between the North and the South. And when the idea first appeared at the convention, no one suggested that another fraction would be more appropriate. Indeed, the rule was included in a June 11th motion made by James Wilson of Pennsylvania and seconded by Charles Pickney of South Carolina, suggesting that a compromise had already occurred behind the scenes. By itself, however, the three-fifths compromise for representation was not enough. Facing deadlock at the convention, Governor Morris, representing Pennsylvania, moved on July 12th to add a provision so that taxation shall be in proportion to representation. There are limited to direct taxation, the purpose of which wrote James Madison was two lessons.
Thank you, Mr. Jeter Webb. You're out of time.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Jan Landis.
My name is Jan Landis, and I'm a grandmother of two New Hanover County schoolchildren. They are not just my future, they're my here and my now. That's why I moved to Wilmington from Pennsylvania. I want to thank you for welcoming the thoughts and ideas of our constituents. Your task of creating policy that guides our children to a comprehensive and excellent education is not easy, but it's very important. That's why I'm here. As you can see from my talk, Bec, I'm interested in your meeting schedule. For citizens like me who wish to attend both city council meetings and school board meetings, it's an important and almost impossible aspiration when both meetings are scheduled for the same day and time of month. I desire to know what the leaders who represent us in these important community leadership positions are doing to impact the well-being of all of our families. I'm not satisfied getting this information secondhand. I want to see and hear your spirits in action. The energy in the room is important to me, and it speaks volumes as to what is and isn't being attended to. It also helps me connect to other engaged citizens in my community. So in light of that, I would really appreciate if you will consider moving your meeting to the second or fourth Tuesday of the month. That will make it possible for me and others in the county and city to attend and witness firsthand both organizations' meetings. Thank you for considering this request. Removing this barrier to citizen access to both meetings in person will be a welcomed action. I look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. Cynthia Munoz. Cynthia, how do you say your last name?
Munoz.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board, and good afternoon, students. Thank you for joining us. Today, you stand to vote on dismantling the EDI Committee. It's no secret that New Hanover County has a history of oppressing people of color and the LGBTQI community. In dismantling this committee, you will effectively be telling every student and staff member that there is no equality, no diversity, no inclusion, and that they do not have a home in our community. This body once again seeks to further oppress a marginalized community, only to uplift themselves. But even though our community has lost faith in this governing body, I do have faith that these upcoming generations will be incentivized to unite against the body that seeks to oppress them and deny them equality. Thank you.
For the last eight months, Love Our Children has been asking you to revise Short Term Suspension Policy 4351. Our simple request, give five, six, and seven-year-old children the right to have a parent participate in the discussion with the principal before a determination is made to suspend a child. We have yet to have a single speaker step up to this microphone and demand that five, six, and seven-year-old children be denied the right to have a parent present at their pre-suspension hearings. So why are some of you so against changing Policy 431? It does not take any power or authority away from the principal. They still will make the final determination. It does not require any extra time of the principal. Principals currently contact a parent after the child has been suspended. We're simply asking that a phone call be made before the child is suspended. And since out-of-school suspensions are only used as a last resort, we know that the principal may have already spoken to a parent about their child's behavior. Changing Policy 4151 would also support Policy 1310/4002, which explicitly acknowledges the importance of meaningful two-way communication between educators and parents. So again, we ask, why are you against changing Policy 4351? It just seems insane for a school system to have a policy that contains the phrase "parents have no right." Revised Policy 4351, support a policy that promotes parental involvement, is logical and evidence-based. Do your job.
Good evening. I recently heard in the news that this evening, the board will be discussing potentially disbanding the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee, and I would like to encourage you to keep this committee intact. This committee is needed to address the inequities that are present within New Hanover County schools. Not too long ago, New Hanover County was federally sanctioned for disproportionate rate of suspending Black students with disabilities. Why would you want to disband a committee that should be trying to fix this issue? Having a district-wide committee allows for reviewing the patterns and trends happening within New Hanover County schools and to help ensure fair and equitable treatment of students and allocation of resources. Getting rid of this committee would assume that New Hanover County Schools has completely addressed the racial and economic disparities that exist within and between schools, and they have not. If we want to make sure that all students have the resources they need to succeed and that all schools are addressing the inequities that are present within them, we need to have an oversight and committee devoted to assessing and reviewing these school initiatives. Addressing inequities within schools is not a one-and-done process, especially for a county that has our history or for a county that continues to ignore the voices of our community as they identify and speak out against these issues. I'm not sure if you will choose to listen to me or others on this issue, since it seems like many of you are here to move forward with your own agenda, rather than seek input, think critically, and then make a sound judgment based on reason and evidence. Again, I would like to encourage you to keep the EDI Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Nan Kavanaugh.
Good evening. I was denied the fulfillment of my public records request for an accounting of the time and money spent on the temporary book ban of stamped. This should have been easy if the dollars spent are being monitored. If they're not, then I have no idea how the board could possibly be considering changing the policy to allow any joshmo off the street to demand books be pulled off the shelves in our schools. Between the book ban and Policy 7205, you're considering opening a financial floodgate that data shows will cost this school system hundreds of thousands of dollars. Is this the highest and best use of our taxpayer dollars, given so many of our children are struggling with the basics academically? Which students in our community are struggling? I've seen the data here presented to this board, and it is the students from lower socioeconomic backgrounds, many of whom are people of color. And yet, you feel it's appropriate, when all your data shows you otherwise, to disband your DEI Committee? If you understood the value of equity, you'd know how incredibly valuable a DEI Committee is to supporting the goal of education. Here's a visual for you. You have a short kid and a tall kid. They're both standing at a fence trying to look over. The tall kid has no problem, but the short kid has to jump to see, and no matter how high he jumps, he can't catch a glimpse. Equity is providing that little guy a stool to stand on, and education is a stool itself. Education is the most important thing society can provide to give children that cannot see a brighter future for themselves because of the situation they were born into. A chance to see over that fence. Students born with disabilities and those living in under-resourced neighborhoods, those are the people that DEI support. Our students need the support of the DEI Committee, and I really hope you consider not disbanding it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Isles.
In fall 2021, a New Hanover County School principal told me my child's needs were outside of her wheelhouse. Two years later, when speaking about disabled students, Ms. Barnhart said, "We're going to have some needs that are very much outside the scope of the school realm." Ms. Barnhart, unfortunately for you and for that principal, federal law makes every educational need of disabled children the responsibility of our public schools. IDA was revolutionary in granting disabled children, like mine, the right to access their education, because people who believed as Ms. Barnhart does denied their education because people who believed as Ms. Barnhart does denied them their right to learn. Stop blaming children for the challenges our district faces because you don't want to educate and support them. Dr. Faust, you also said, when describing disability needs, and I quote, "Whether it is speech impaired to the most expensive disability." Stop defining a disabled child's value to learn by how much it costs to educate them. My child is not defined by monetary value, she's a human being. Also, our district just announced they are shutting down Mosley's High School program. Thirty-five percent of these students have an IEP. Is it being shut down because the $866,000 grant will run out? Dr. Faust, are these children too expensive to educate? This program has supported children for at least a decade by removing barriers present in their district school, allowing them to access their education and graduate. But now the program is too expensive, and suddenly, New Hanover County Schools does not believe these children are worth this investment. Stop telling us that our children are not worth the expense to educate and that they are a burden on the system. My child, every child, are worthy of a quality and equitable education. Shame on any of you who deny any child access to their education because you believe they are too great a burden or expense.
Thank you, Gail Taper?
I have been a member of the EDI Committee since 2019. For all of that time, with the exception of the last year, this committee has been robust and productive. It is a stated purpose of this Board to increase the test scores in New Hanover County. And yet, what is being proposed is, which is to dissolve the EDI Committee, and its efforts debunked over forty years of national research which conclusively demonstrates the academic and social benefits of equity and inclusion in schools. This erodes the quality of all of our students' education to dissolve this committee. This is a huge disservice to not only our most vulnerable children to not support EDI, but it is also unconscionable to destroy this environment of learning for all of our children. New Hanover County Schools already is diverting money from exceptional children because of federal sanctions that have been imposed upon this school board, this school system, because of discriminatory disciplinary practices. The inequitable practices are already creating difficulties, and this Board is proposing to make it worse. According to the Port City Daily News, fifteen percent of funding from the district that the district received is being diverted toward addressing this federal mandate. Fifteen percent. That is fifteen percent that is being diverted away from children in need, and each of these children represents a human being person that belong to families. And each of those families deserve a good education, a quality education, and they deserve to be included equitably. New Hanover County Schools is the 12th largest school district in-
Thank you, you're out of time. New Hanover in North Carolina. Thank you, you're out of time. Just Shannon, Miss Ehr.
Last month, I stood here and asked that you all become the biggest cheerleaders for the school system so the residents of New Hanover County will see the benefits of investing in our schools. Then I watched the policy meeting, agenda meeting, and EDI Committee meeting. Wow, all were disturbing to see and hear. Students in New Hanover County need people who are advocating for all of them, not just niche groups. Teachers and other employees need a board who is going to advocate for them and not continue pushing unproven theories laden with buzzwords. Here is an example from the policy meeting of how not to be an advocate for all. A board member indicated that some parents believe students are being taught certain topics in family life class, and as a result, was questioning the class itself and the ages it's for. This is a situation where instead of instantly believing the parents, the board member could read through the local curriculum themselves or forward the curriculum to the concerned parents, or, and this is the crazy thought, speak to the teachers who teach the subject, something that I rarely hear happening. Instead, it's discussed in a meeting when it could likely have been handled by a few minutes of research. Another example: At last night's CDI Committee meeting, the chair indicated that she surveyed families about whether the committee is needed or not. A member of the committee indicated that neither she nor anyone she knew was part of the survey group, and without a good cross-section, data can be inaccurate. It's dangerous to act on skewed data, as the effects could be negative and far-reaching. I'd originally planned on saying more about media literacy as the issues I'm hearing from board members play into this, but I decided to focus more this month on inequities in the school system. Facts are facts. Sometimes facts make us happy, and other times they disturb us or make us sad. But you know what we can't do? We can't change facts just because we don't like them. Again, you represent all New Hanover County students and teachers, not just the ones who think like you. Every child in this county is a living, breathing individual who deserves the best education possible. Be professional and do your job. Represent all.
Thank you. Miss Sutton?
I had the pleasure of watching the policy committee meeting. It was interesting to see Dr. Faust. Dr. Faust, if you could listen while I speak, I'll be right, please, appreciate you. It was interesting to see you interrupt a board member to state that the Constitution wasn't written with you in mind. Not going to insult your intelligence by explaining the history behind the Constitution and the way it has evolved over time to expand protections to all Americans. I think it's better instead to just leave it at this: Which do you think is better, for some of our children to hear that the Constitution wasn't written with them in mind, or teach them about the journey and struggle for change that led to the protections that are afforded to them today? How about we teach our children the value of different amendments and teach them to defend these protections at all costs? Get them to understand the sacrifices made by Americans to secure these protections so they understand why they are so lucky to be American? Teach our children to fix and mend. Things are not always done perfect the first time. In short, Dr. Faust, I think your comment missed the mark. It is a disjustice, and quite frankly, it could be a slap in the face to some of those who sacrificed decades of their lives fighting for the level of constitutional equality we have today. Got some time left. Dr. Faust, I've really struggled in here, man, because the thing is, like, we've brought multiple issues to you before under the previous Board that we felt were constitutional violations, and you never even discussed them. You never even contacted us for a brief discussion about it, and then when you say something like that, it kind of makes some of us wonder about your stance on the Constitution as a whole. I hope you think about what I say and take it to heart, because legitimately, I think that we could do better as a role model for our children if we're getting them to understand what we've grown on. Like, I guess the best way to say it, I've got ten seconds left, we've changed a lot as a nation, nothing's done right the first time, but like, I mean, the Constitution now is looking out for you, it's looking out for every single one of us, and our children need to be taught that instead of, you know, having a negative stigma towards it.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton, you're out of time. There you go.
Thank you, Board, for proposing guardrails to maintain classroom neutrality via policy 7205, letter Z. The Equality in Education Bill has similar verbiage and has passed the NC House and is in committee in the Senate. So while it appears Dr. Faust, Faison, and Ms. Craybill are a bit flung and distressed about these guidelines and about the Constitution, we may soon see this verbiage mandated for schools by law. Dr. Faust, you make about $230,000 a year, thanks to the equality afforded to you by God, secured by our founding documents and capitalism, yet you feel victimized as a Black man, since it was upsetting that policy 7205 would allow for no race to be superior to another. By logical default, that means you believe one race should be superior to another. So I ask, what race, then, do you think we should teach as a superior race? If you deem any race or class of citizens superior to another, the equality protected in our Declaration of Independence and by our government becomes irrelevant. You said that the Constitution doesn't apply to you. Sir, you have a preeminent position over 26,000 impressionable students in New Hanover County. You don't get to pick and choose what you like and dislike about the Constitution based on feelings or impressions. The Constitution is the foundation of liberty in this nation. Many of us would benefit from studying the breadth of our U.S. history and to highlight incredible Black patriots who were free, who could read and write, and who fought zealously for America's freedom. Those like Wentworth Cheswell, who was elected to office in 1768 and served in public office for forty-nine years, who also did a midnight ride, similar to Paul Revere. How about James Armistead, whose spy intelligence helped win the Battle of Yorktown and ultimately the Revolutionary War? We do all have a lot to learn.
Thank you, Miss Gates. Michael Sheridan?
I'm Dr. Michael Sheridan, and I'm here to share some facts with you. Based on data from the Federal Individual with Disabilities Education Act, we know that Black children with disabilities in New Hanover County receive 4.5 times more out-of-school suspensions than their white peers. Because of this, the federal sanction against New Hanover County Schools, now in its sixth year, has cost our special education program about $5.4 million. This wouldn't be the case if the school board addressed the inequities in resources and personnel across schools. More counselors, more social workers, and more teaching assistants are needed. Why have so many of those positions been cut? Multi-tiered System of Support, or MTSS, coordinators must be supported in our elementary schools. It would be a mistake to start cutting them. And as in-school suspensions increase in the elementary schools, in-school suspension teachers are needed to help keep our children learning. When will those positions be created? Simply put, disparities and out-of-school suspensions are created by inequities. Love Our Children supports the continuation of the Board's Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee. Love Our Children supports Malcolm Johnson and his work as the district's chief Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Officer. Love Our Children supports the goals, outcomes, and strategies of the 2022-2027 strategic plan. Supporting equity means supporting all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Cassie Rimpel?
Please tell me how to pronounce your last name. Cassie?
Yes? Hi. Did you ask me a question?
Ask you to pronounce your last name for me.
Well, that's a good question, because sometimes I change it. It's Rimpel.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to the Board. I am Cassie Rimpel. I am one of the co-founders of the Hanover Advocats, and we are an advocacy group for New Hanover High School. And first and foremost, I want to thank each of you for your service that you're doing, and for all of you that are here, Eddie Anderson, of course, and to all of the staff. It's important that we all thank you for all that you're doing, for all of the students in our county. I'm also here to talk about New Hanover High School, and it's very fitting that we happen to have a lot of people talking about equity tonight, because there is a great disparity between the facilities at New Hanover High School and at the other three traditional high schools. And it's because, yes, New Hanover High School is over 100 years old. It's one of the oldest buildings in North Carolina that's continuously being used. But that can no longer be a reason as to why we don't invest in this school. We must find the money, whether it's a school board bond, whether it's something else. We need to find the money to make these schools equitable. And what's more is that when you find the money to invest in New Hanover High School, you help the entire county, because there is some overcrowding issues at the other high schools. But there's also something at New Hanover, well, New Hanover County, and that all of the families that attend high school can elect which high schools they go to because of the specialty programs that each of the traditional high schools have. And so, when you invest in New Hanover High School, you are investing in the county because it will solve some of the overcrowding issues at the other high schools, because people are self-electing to go to other schools because of what the conditions are at New Hanover. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Rachel Hladick?
Hello. My name is Rachel Hladick, and my son is a Mosley scholar. I'm here to tell you, from our experience, what the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley means to us. My husband and I are graduates of New Hanover Schools. My son has been New Hanover County School since kindergarten, but he learns differently than me. Where I had zero difficulties in middle and high school, he has struggled. He is bright and kind, but has a different learning style. He has had an IEP since kindergarten with ADHD and dysgraphia, and I'm a mental health professional, so let me tell you, we have done all the behavior-based therapy we can do. I'm so sorry, kid. And the stimulant medications, all the evidence-based practices for ADHD, and gone to all the specialists, all the genetic testing, you name it. His IEP accommodations have supported him, but he does better in a smaller setting like Mosley. He is a freshman, and he has transitioned perfectly, and he's excelling. His report card is the best it's ever been. Like, we literally, like, thought he was, like, cheating or something, like, seriously If you take the support away from him, we are very much thinking that he'll regress. Next semester, he'll be in honors English. That's a first for us. I think the smallest setting of the school, and what this means to these kids, they are not academically gifted. They cannot get into this signature programs or the specialty schools, most of them. I know my kid won't. Mosley was our option for these kids, and I have lived the alternative high school leaning, by the way. My student is not a behavior problem, but he is also not gifted, and he will not get the attention he needs to prosper. Please take this into consideration when making decisions regarding these children's future. Thank you.
Angela Mahaney?
This Board seems to exhaust every avenue to silence the public and avoid the conversation that revolves around safety, equity, or Title IX. It's mind-blowing that after the sexual assault cases were settled in June, you immediately hired a conservative law firm in Vogel that meant losing our Title IX coordinator, unless, of course, he was willing to conduct reprehensible acts of blatantly refusing to follow federal law for a political agenda. Everything that has been built has been destroyed with regard to Title IX, and we've moved backwards instead of forwards. You've forgotten that a key piece of the settlement and at the forefront for the survivors was to put preventive parameters in place so that this never happens again. The victims of those crimes obviously care more than elected officials, as they refused to bargain on that piece of the settlement. Their goal is to ensure that students are safe from pedophiles despite the Board's retaliation and re-traumatizing them. Our schools are far from safe. Your negligence and lack of integrity caused us our coordinator and then attacked the Title IX Committee, stating that their work is done and it's no longer needed. You are aware that a list of Title IX complaints in need of investigation continues to be long and was already in need of an additional investigator before you lost our coordinator. Even then, you tried to hide it under EDI, which you're conveniently now trying to dissolve as well. Every single concern raised on the Title IX survey that you worked so hard to go against us has been ignored. This survey indicated that three-fourths of students who have been sexually assaulted and harassed do not even report it because of the toxic culture that exists in our schools that normalizes sexual abuse and shames victims through the Board's abuse of power. The survey results painted a clear picture as to how decades of abuse was allowed to happen and how it will continue on this path. Without the prevention piece outlined in the settlement, our students are at risk. And let us not forget that there are remaining victims of Michael Kelly that could come forward at any time, who have yet to have their day in court, and once again, highlight the incompetence of New Hanover County Schools and keeping students safe. I'd say the work of Title IX Committee is far from over.
Thank you, Ms. Mahaney. Levin Paul?
I'd like to begin with a moment of silence for the countless number of Americans that have died and are still dying to ensure Dr. Faust up there is able to enjoy all the blessings and liberties afforded to him under a United States Constitution. I have no patience for bourgeois Democrats complaining and lecturing us about the history of our founding. Sir, your comments on November 21st were revealing of your contempt for our Constitution in this country. Allow me to educate you on exactly what some of those men said around that table in August of 1787. Oliver Ellsworth from Connecticut said if slavery was to be considered an immoral light- "If slavery was to be considered an immoral light, we ought to go further and free those already in the country." Provision is already made in Connecticut for abolishing it, and abolition has already taken place in Massachusetts. George Mason said, "Every master of slaves is born a petty tyrant." Hugh Williamson, from North Carolina, said that in both opinion and practice, he was against slavery. Democrats, like Mr. Faust, hold so much contempt for this Constitution, and yet it is the Democrat Party that has been responsible for the worst racial atrocities in our country's history. It was the Democrats that were responsible for Jim Crow, blocking school doorways, segregating the civil service under Woodrow Wilson. The KKK was the militant arm of the Democrat Party. Robert Byrd, a former Klansman himself, was a Democrat senator until 2010. It was the Republican Party, formed in the 1850s, that fulfilled the promises of our founding against the wishes of Democrats. This is the history that's being hidden from our kids. You, sir, have no business being seated at that dais. You have no business being in charge of our schools, and you have absolutely no business being anywhere near the next generation of Americans. Thank you.
Natasha Tue?
I couldn't have said it better myself. It seems that many of us here are confused about the definition of equity and equality. Allow me to clear this up. Equity is the equal outcome for all, despite what effort you give. Equality is equal opportunity for all. Get that right. Outcome with equality is actually represented by the effort you put in, but I'm sure many of you would understand that. Over the last four to five years, this school district, county, and city administration have spent a significant amount of money on this, what do you call it? The DEI. What have we gotten from that? What are the results? I look at our school performance. We've got, what, 60% of our kids that are not proficient at Math I? 40% not proficient at reading? So this is where it's gotten us. As a parent, I believe it would be more beneficial to focus on teaching civics and history content that prepares our students for life after school. It would certainly be more productive to teach our children using material that recognizes the importance of facts and acknowledges the periods in history where Americans have fallen far short of our ideals and the principles that our country was founded on. Yes, we have fallen, fallen short, but this country is founded by men, imperfect men in an imperfect world, striving to be better. And that is what allows all of us, all of you, to sit in the position that you sit today. Americans have failed to live up to their ideals and the founding principles while not allowing periods to demonize our national character, deconstruct our culture of freedom and equality under the law, and turn Americans of different backgrounds against one another.
Thank you.
We are one.
Thank you. You're out of time.
All Americans.
Peter Raderich?
At your April Town Hall meeting, I asked, "Would you consider having the Policy Committee review Policy 4351 and revise it to allow a parent the right to be present at an informal hearing for their five, six, or seven-year-old child, either in person, over the phone, or on Zoom?" So what happened? Well, the following month, the Policy Committee met and talked about short-term suspension policy. However, the Committee never discussed Love Our Children's proposal. Rather, they discussed a different proposal. That proposal was about all students pre-K through 12 instead of just five, six, and seven-year-olds. And it required a parent to be present during any meeting instead of giving them the right, and therefore the option, to be present at their child's informal hearing. And that proposal was about what happens after a short-term suspension is imposed rather than before a principal makes a determination to suspend a child. Well, after 25 minutes, no action was taken other than to check the box that the Committee had talked about the policy. And that was eight months ago. Tonight, again, Love Our Children asks that the Board direct the Policy Committee to take a thoughtful look at our recommendations for revising Policy 4351 at their December meeting. Delaying action will mean that parents will continue to be shut out from participating in an important part of their young child's education. Thank you.
Thank you. Loretta Stackhouse?
One call. That is all we're asking for. Before a five, six, or seven-year-old child is kicked out of school, have the principal make one call to a parent. The parent can get information about their child's behavior and then ask three important questions. One, which positive behavior support alternatives have been used with my child? Two, is the out-of-school suspension being used as a last resort? Three, are there any other positive behavior support alternatives that could be tried? The principal still has the final say as to whether or not the child is suspended. Love Our Children is asking that you revise Short-Term Suspension Policy 4351. Let five, six, and seven-year-old children have the right to have a parent or other representative participate in the discussion with the principal before a determination is made to suspend a child. Stop treating our youngest learners like they're criminals. Their parents love them. Let them be a part of the conversation. Parents deserve the opportunity to ask the questions and get the answers before their children are kicked out of school. That one phone call can make a big difference in a child's life. Love our children and revise Policy 4351. And since I have a few seconds, "Suspending stamped didn't stop the book." Netflix now has a documentary. You don't have to read it anymore. You can watch it.
Thank you, Ms. Stackhouse. Leslie Pazey?
Mr. Wildeavor, point of order. Would you please remind our audience that they are not allowed to make comments in between speakers or during speaker's talks? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grabill. Please remember, we do not need to have comments. Let the speaker speak. But please do not make comments. You can clap afterwards, but please allow them to speak. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I want to touch briefly on several subjects regarding elimination and the Constitution. Did you know that in the early 1990s, the North Carolina Legislature passed a law requiring that a second language be taught in all grades K-12? New Hanover had a great program developing, but when the state money ran out, the program was quickly eliminated. Several years ago, the district received a grant to start Mosley Academy. This amazing program serves kids who need small classes and a specialized environment. Yet, after a brief discussion at the Agenda Review Meeting, an assistant superintendent and a couple of board members were able to eliminate the program, apparently without any public notice or input from the whole Board. Interesting that this happened just as the grant ran out. Now there are plans to eliminate the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee. This time, it's not about money, but politics. Ms. Mason said at the start of yesterday's meeting that this has been her goal since joining the Board. Actually, she's simply parroting an idea that has been the goal of one party for years. Since the district no longer has a Title IX trained attorney, I assume you see this as the easiest time to eliminate EDI. This affirms to me that your goal is schools that are illegally inequitable and exclusive, kind of like the schools in the 1930s, 40s, and 50s. I guess you want to follow Plessy versus Ferguson instead of Brown versus the Board of Education. Is a two- or three-tiered school system your goal? Because it certainly sounds like it. And one last thing. At the Policy Committee meeting, a comment was made that separation of church and state is not in the Constitution. If I might quote James Madison, the author of the Bill of Rights. "The purpose of the separation of church and state is to keep forever from these shores the ceaseless strife that has soaked the soil of Europe with blood for centuries." I guess that means if the words aren't there, or if you can eliminate them, it's the Board's intention to return our district to when you think America was great again.
Thank you. You're out of time. Tim Merrick?
Good evening. A question. What is the opposite of equity? In Roger's Thesaurus, we find dishonesty, partiality, and injustice. Now, I understand that the word equity has taken on a very powerful political symbolism, and you may feel compelled to push back against that term on a partisan basis. But equity isn't just a word. It's not a box to be checked. And students and families that are served by New Hanover County schools don't deserve to be pawns in anyone's political posturing. So many families already struggle daily with the injustices of our system. The lack of safety in schools, the economic and racial disparities, sexual harassment, and support for disabilities. Their needs are not being met. They are not being treated equitably. During your Policy Committee last week, it was said that your work around EDI was concluded. Well, there are $4.5 million that dispute that claim. During the Board's strategic planning, where equity was a major concern for parents, the Board did a SWOT analysis in which a threat to the success of the EDI program was identified. Many people do not understand what equity means. The question is, do you? Because if you disband the EDI Committee, it tells the community that you stand for dishonesty, partiality, and injustice. Please show the community that you stand with us by fully empowering the EDI Committee and Title IX. Thank you for the opportunity to address this vitally important topic.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. David Perry?
Hopefully, he won't chop my head off in the video. Hi, I'm David Perry. I'm soon going to be a candidate for this school board. I'll be declaring on Monday. But I'm here tonight in support of Mrs. Mason's motion to get rid of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. One of the things that I want to get to first, however, is I listened to some of what went on in yesterday's committee meeting. It was despicable. Most of the people, including Mr. McManus. Oh, you am big. Apology. But I'm not here for that. I'm actually here to tell you a story. In 2022, I was in Warsaw, Poland on a work assignment. It was Easter time. So I was looking for a place to go to a service. And since my Polish is limited to "jean-dobré" and a couple of other words, I was looking for an English-speaking service. And I found one, and I went. And one of the things that impressed me right off the bat was the diversity of the congregation there. There were people from all over the world. There were actually far more Asians, Indians, Africans, and Hispanics there than white people. It was actually kind of refreshing. But that diversity didn't come from a DEI program or a checklist. It came naturally through a shared belief that we are all, as individuals, created in the image of God, and that He loves us all equally. Now, I have a seven-year-old grandson who attends Cottonton Elementary. Go Cougars! And, you know, I don't want him growing up to learn that he is part of some white, privileged group, oppressor group, just because of the color of his skin. And I don't want his classmates, who might be students of color, thinking that they are victims or members of some oppressed clan. Neither is true. When are we going to get to the point that we least treat our children by the content of their character, not the color of their skin? I say the time is now. I stand with Ms. Lewis Mason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Robert Bellamy? Robert Bellamy, are you here? Last call. If not, then Karen Clark.
The Word of the Lord. The Spirit of the Lord God is upon me because the Lord has anointed me to preach good tidings to the poor. He has sent me to heal the brokenhearted, to proclaim liberty to the captives and the opening of prison doors to those who are bound, to comfort all who mourn, to give them beauty for ashes, the oil of joy for mourning, the garment of praise for the spirit of heaviness, that they may be called trees of righteousness, and they shall rebuild the old ruins. They shall raise up the former desolations of many generations. Strangers shall stand and feed your flocks, but you shall be named the priests of the Lord. They shall call you the servants of our God. Instead of your shame, you shall have double honor. And instead of confusion, you shall rejoice. Everlasting joy shall be yours. For I, the Lord, love justice. I will direct your work in truth. All who see you shall acknowledge you that you are the posterity whom the Lord has blessed. I will greatly rejoice in the Lord for He has clothed me with the garments of salvation and covered me with the robe of righteousness. For as the earth brings forth its bud, as the garden causes the things that are sown in it to spring forth, so the Lord God will cause righteousness and praise to spring forth before all nations. The Word of the Lord.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. That concludes our call to the audience. Those of you who signed up as alternates, we're out of time and space. Very, very sorry, unless...
No, it's past cutting them off right now.
But we're at 25.
That's not in our rules.
We're at 25.
Are you sure?
Either that, or we make a motion to allow them to speak.
Mr. Chuman? Mr. Wildeavor, I would like to make a motion to allow the Mosley students to speak.
Second.
All favor, please. Take a time or say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Seven oh.
Gerald Chavez?
Good evening, members of... Good evening, members of the Board of Education. I want to express my sincere gratitude for giving me the opportunity to address you today. My name is Gerald Chavez, and I'm representing a...
Mr. Chavez, I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. I want to express my sincere gratitude for giving me the opportunity to address you today. My name is Gerald Chavez, and I'm here to represent a group of students who share a deep concern for the future of our love, CRA at Mosley. A few days ago, we received a group news of the closure of our school was made. I want to start by sharing a bit of story of our institution, a story of the transform and grow. Where was once a destination of a school for troubled students, Mosley has turned into a safe and welcoming space for 70 students, including myself. The cultural diversity of the characters of our school is something that we take pride in. We come from different corners of the world, and this mix of culture will now enrich our education experience but also create a unique environmental where we feel accepted and understood. The news of the closure of our school was deeply affecting us. For many of us, CRA is not just a place for study. It's our second home. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Alex Finley, and I am a student at CRA. I am here today because the decision to close my school is very upsetting, not to mention just to me, but the other 70 students at the academy. The reason I had to transfer to the school was not a good one, so I'll make it brief. At my districted high school, in my freshman year, I was sexually assaulted. I developed PTSD from my assault and could not bring myself to go. My grades suffered greatly. I went from an A/B honor roll student to Cs and Ds. I wasn't going to graduate. I didn't want to, and due to my grades, I wasn't going to. I didn't feel safe anywhere. I gave up on my future. However, that changed whenever I started going to the Career Readiness Academy. I felt like I had a safe space. I could... I could be myself, and I could thrive. For the first time since what happened to me, I felt safe. My grades drastically increased, and I can proudly say that I am starting a college class in the spring semester. There are teachers at Mosley that are unlike any other that I have ever had. They truly believe in me. They treat me with respect and help me however they can. I can say with confidence the only reason I have a chance at graduating is because of this school. This isn't just a school you are shutting down. It's a second home to not just me, but many others. The people here at CRA are not just my friends or my teachers. They are my family. They have helped me in more ways than they know, and I am a functioning member of society because of them. I want to be a teacher when I am older because of the teachers I had there. Ms. Myers, Mr. Motley, Ms. Tackett, Knox, Mr. Chandler, Ms. Reed, and Ms. Pape have helped me. Sometimes things that are small, like CRA, have the biggest impact on people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeremiah Castillo. I'm a junior at Mosley, and I've been going there for all three years of high school. At first, when I was in eighth grade, I wanted to go to a big high school really bad because I wanted to be with my friends and stuff. I didn't really care about school or grades, and I didn't really put to mind of what I actually wanted to be when I grow up. I didn't actually think about what's after high school and stuff. And when I came to Mosley, it was kind of the same. I didn't like school still. It was all just, I did everything I wanted at school, and I was just an overall bad kid. The teachers there made me realize that there's more to life than just having fun. You have to work hard to play hard. And over there, they taught me that I can ask for help. Asking for help is really important because sometimes you might not want to, but it's what you need. And at school, it was really hard for me asking for help, but I got to overcome it, and I got to ask for help, and it helped me a lot from going from Cs and Ds to As and Bs. The adversity at Mosley is amazing. We have all sorts of countries, from Asia to Central America to here in the States. We have Brazilian kids, we have Jamaican kids, we have Caribbean, we have Asian kids, we have everything there. And everybody there feels so comfortable with each other. It's a safe haven for everybody here, or for everybody there, and everybody feels like they can get along good. I always liked the school because it was small. I don't really like the big schools just because there's so much. And from what I hear with my friends that go to the big schools, the grading there is, I mean, so much more harder because you don't get as much as attention as you do there at Mosley. If you don't understand, it's so easy to ask for help instead of just going the whole class without understanding what's going on. And with that, I'd like to conclude everything. Thank you, guys, for hearing me.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Lacey, and I am a sophomore at Career Readiness Academy, and I have concerns about CRA closing next year. I feel that we should speak up and have a voice and let you know how much CRA has helped us all. CRA may be as small as well as others who are small in our county, but we are all unique in variety ways. Students who struggle with social anxiety may need help, and only one-on-one support can help alleviate that problem. Mosley always prepared to provide what is needed to handle this concern, many others immediately. Larger schools like Coggrit, New Hanover, Laney, and Asher are so big that these teens may not get one-on-one help as soon as needed because the teachers can't stop what they are doing to help one kid out of 25 to 30 kids in the class. But at CRA, the wonderful teachers and counselors can do that for us. I like it when we need help with some of our work. They will sit next to us and help to the fullest they can. And when we are having anxiety, struggling, and when we get frustrated, we can take a five-minute break, and that's helpful. In a regular high school, they don't understand that some of us have other mental health problems that we face, and we do need that extra help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education members. My name is Maria Castropas, and today I'm here representing my peers and myself, the students of CRA at Mosley. First and foremost, I would like to express my gratitude for giving me the opportunity to speak before you on the matter that deeply affects all of us. Recently, we learned the news that the decision to close our school, it was already made. This decision caught us by surprise that we were not given the chance to have a voice. We were not consulted on how we felt about it. I would like to emphasize that our school has undergone a significant transformation in recent years. We started as a school helping students with various challenges, but over time, we have evolved into a safer and more welcoming environment. Currently, we have around 70 students, and though we are a small in number, this very feature is what makes our school special. The small number of students provide us with the opportunity for a more personalized education. With smaller classrooms, our teachers can focus on each of us individually, creating a more effective learning environment. Many of us have faced challenges in other schools and have found in this community a place where we can feel comfortable and safe. I didn't feel that in other schools. We understand that there may be specific reasons for considering closure, but we would like to ask you to take into account our experiences and positive impact in this school. We would like the opportunity to have a voice in our opinions and work together to find solutions to benefit others. In summary, CRA at Mosley is not just a place of education for us. It is a home where we feel supported and valued. We urge you to consider the importance of keeping our school open and listen to the voices of those directly affected. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was very brave of you all, and I do appreciate each one of you getting up here and speaking. Board members, do we need to take a quick break, or maybe a five-minute break?
Could we please?
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. I thought you were saying no. I have 6:57. Let's be back at 7:02, please. Okay, I got 7:03. So if I could get Board members, come on back, please. Board members, if you'll make your way back, please.
I'd like some instruction on how this works, because I can't remember last time.
All right. If anyone would take their seats, please. I'm sorry? Two? Two? Okay. All right. Next order of business is the election of Board Chairperson and Vice Chair, so I will turn the gavel over to our superintendent, Dr. Faust. Dr. Faust, listen.
Yeah, good. You. I'll go home. In a moment, I will call for nominations for the Office of Chair of the New Hanover County Board of Education. Nominations do not require a second. If more than one person is nominated, the board will vote on nominees in the order of nominations. The first person to receive a majority of Board members present is elected chair. Nominations are in order for the Office of Board Chair. Are there any nominations?
Dr. Faust. I nominate Pete Wildebohr for the next chairman.
Are there any other nominations? If not, nominations for the Board Chair are closed. We will now vote on nominees, or the nominee in the order of the nomination. For those in favor of Pete Wildebohr as chair, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Pete Wildebohr is elected chair by a vote of, I'm sorry, Ms. Walker. I... Okay. She didn't vote, okay. So I'm going to have to have Ms. Bowie do a roll call so that I can put this down in a minute.
Ms. Bradford.
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart.
Yes.
Mr. McManus. Mr. Wildebohr.
Yes.
Ms. Mason.
Yes.
Ms. Walker. And Ms. Craybill.
No.
Pete Wildebohr is elected chair by a vote of six to one. I now pass the gavel to Mr. Wildebohr. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And before we get to the next section, which is the election of the Vice Chair, I would really like to thank my fellow Board members for your faith in me, and I'm going to continue to try to do my very, very best. As I said a year ago, I'm far from perfect, but I will try to do what's right, number one, by the students, of New Hanover County students, schools, excuse me, also by all of our faculties, our parents, and by you. So hopefully, I'll make you proud in the next year. And again, thank you very much for this situation and this nomination. At this point, I'm going to do, as Dr. Faust did, read the script, and then we'll open up our election for Vice Chair. Nominations are in order for the Office of Vice Chair. We will go through, we will list out all the nominations, which is a little different than we did last year. At the end of that, we will vote in the order that they were listed, and then we will continue until there are a majority of votes for a person, and then we will close the nominations at that point. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Stephanie Walker.
Okay, we have, I heard here first.
Point of order.
I nominate Josie Barnhart.
Nineteen of our handbook, it says, "In order to make a motion, you stand to be recognized", and I'm the only one standing.
Thank you for that. Ms. Bradford.
I nominate Josie Barnhart.
Okay. Barnhart? I heard second, Ms. Craybill.
We don't have to second.
No, no, no. I heard your nomination second.
I stood up first, but just...
Yes, you did. You were quick on standing. Ms. Walker?
Very fair.
Also, Ms. Mason.
I'd like to nominate myself.
Ms. Mason. Are there other nominations? So again, right now, we have Ms. Barnhart, Ms. Walker, and Ms. Mason. Again, last call for any other nominations. If there are no other nominations, the nominations for the Office of Vice Chair is closed. We will go through, and Ms. Bowie, if you would, please call the roll. The first is those in favor of Ms. Barnhart as Vice Chair. Please call the roll. Wait, give me one second. Let me get my paper ready. Sorry. There we go. Go ahead, please. This is for Ms. Barnhart.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Ms. McManus?
No.
Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
No.
Ms. Walker? And Ms. Craybill?
No.
So that does not pass. Next, we have Ms. Walker. So let me read it so I can say it properly. Those in favor of Ms. Walker as Vice Chair, please say aye when Ms. Bowie calls your name.
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
I apologize. No.
No, okay.
All right, we'll start over. Ms. Bradford.
We'll start again.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes. Are we standing? No. No.
Okay. Ms. Bradford, this is again, let's start the whole thing over again because we're kind of confused. Those in favor of Ms. Stephanie... Those in favor of Ms. Stephanie Walker as vice chair, please say aye.
I think we need, point of order, I think we need to do a roll call on voting.
We're doing that, I'm just, I'm reading this whole thing again. Please call aye when called by Ms. Bowie.
Don't worry about who we vote for.
This is for Ms. Walker, one more time. This, right now, we are going through nomination for Ms. Walker as vice chair. If you say aye, then it's yes, and no is no.
Oh, it's not.
We're going to start with Ms. Bowie, please call the roll.
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Mr. Wildabour?
No.
Ms. Mason?
No.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Ms. Crable?
In nonpartisan fashion, yes.
One, two, one, two, three, okay, so that's three, that still is not the majority. So next, we have, those in favor of Ms. Melissa Mason as vice chair, please say aye, those opposed saying no, when Ms. Bowie calls the roll.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Mr. Wildabour?
No.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
I'm sorry, yes?
And Ms. Crable?
No.
So again, that's one, two, one, two, three. So we go back again, we'll start with Ms. Barnhart. Again, let me read the things over.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I might suggest that you ask for nominations.
Reopen the nominations.
I nominate Stephanie Walker.
Okay, it does say here, by our thing, that we continue until a nominee is approved by the majority, so.
Okay.
We're following the rules as provided here. Thank you, Dr. Faust. So, we will start with Ms. Barnhart, second time around. Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Mr. Wildabour?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
No.
Ms. Walker? And Ms. Crable?
No.
Okay, that does not pass. Ms. Walker? We have room here. Ms. Walker, again, those in favor of Ms. Walker as vice chair, please say aye, those opposed say no. Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Mr. Wildabour?
No.
Ms. Mason?
No.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Ms. Crable?
Yes, in nonpartisan fashion.
Thank you. All right, so, again, we have three votes there. Those in favor of Ms. Mason as vice chair, please say aye, those opposed say no, when Ms. Bowie calls the roll.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Mr. Wildabour?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Walker? And Ms. Crable?
No.
And I'm sorry, I did not hear Ms. Walker, no. So that's one, two, three votes again, so let's go on to the next round. So we'll have Ms. Barnhart, those in favor of Ms. Barnhart, as vice chair, please say aye, those opposed say no.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Mr. Wildabour?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
No.
Ms. Walker?
No.
And Ms. Crable?
No.
Okay, again, one, two, three, so next will be Ms. Walker.
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Mr. Wildabour?
No.
Ms. Mason?
No.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Ms. Crable?
Yes, in nonpartisan fashion.
Thank you. All right, we will go on to Ms. Mason, so those that are in favor of Ms. Mason as vice chair, say aye, those opposed say no. Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Mr. Wildabour?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Walker? And Ms. Crable?
No.
No, no. Okay. Let me see my paper here. All right, let's try one more round, and then we will take a break, and.
Mr. Wildabour, point of order.
Yes, ma'am.
How many times do we have to do this? Is there something in Robert's Rules of Order? I wasn't able to find that, and.
Mr. Vogel?
Vogel appears to be looking in his manual.
I know that at the end of the day, we do not have to come out with a vice, a vice chair today.
Then I make a motion that we suspend elections right now, and we go with no vice chair.
Okay, there's a motion to suspend, is there a second? Hearing none, we will carry on.
She, Ms. Walker is trying to say yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you second that? Okay, give me like a thumbs or something, okay, thank you. We have a first and a second to suspend the vote for vice chair, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowie, would you call the roll on the motion to suspend the vote for vice chair?
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Mr. Wildabour?
No.
Ms. Mason?
No.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Ms. Crable?
Yes, I can stay all night.
We can all, okay, so, I am not exactly sure where we were. Let's see, we got three there, so we are on to.
You said take a vote, and you said take a break.
Yeah. Let's go, let's go a couple more times. So we are, Ms. Barnhart, is that right? Ms. Barnhart, Ms. Barnhart. So, those in favor of Ms. Barnhart as vice chair, please say aye, those opposed say no. Ms. Bowie? Working at those vocal cords today.
Oh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Point of order, we only allowed ten minutes for this discussion, and we are now at thirteen, so I make a motion that we suspend, again, according to time.
Okay.
That's what we always want to do, so let's just do it.
I make a substitute motion to extend the discussion by five minutes.
Okay, we have.
Second.
Do we make a substitute motion?
Sure. First and second to add five minutes.
Why was I not allowed to make a substitute motion earlier? I was called, yeah, Mr. Vogel ruled on it.
Because it was, I don't know. Anyway, we have a motion in front of us to, to add five minutes to the discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand, make it easier for us. One, two, three, okay? One, two, three, four, there you go, so we add five minutes, starting now, I have 7:18, so it will be done at 7:23. We have Ms. Barnhart in front of us, those in favor of Ms. Barnhart as vice chair, please say aye, those opposed say no. Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Mr. Wildabour?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
No.
Ms. Walker?
No.
And Ms. Crable?
No.
Okay, next, we will have, those in favor of Ms. Walker as vice chair, please say aye, those opposed say no. Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Mr. Wildabour?
No.
Ms. Mason?
No.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Ms. Crable?
Yes.
Okay, again.
In nonpartisan fashion, sorry.
Yes, thank you for sharing that with us again. Those in favor of Ms. Mason as vice chair, please say aye, those opposed say no. Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Mr. Wildabour?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
No.
And Ms. Crable?
No.
Ms. Mason, congratulations, that is a four-three vote. Ms. Mason is elected vice chair of the New Hanover County Board of Education by a vote of four to three. Congratulations, Ms. Mason. We're going to return to the agenda for the meeting. We will take a brief break to be able to reconfigure, so let's take a three-minute break, if we can do it in three minutes, to reconfigure quickly. Thank you for working so diligently on that. Our next item of business is, next item, we will be voting on everything, with the exception of item I, and we'll vote on section I separately after that.
Mr. McManus is having an eye issue. Mr. Wildabour, point, Ms. Chair, while we're waiting for Ms. Walker, can I make a brief announcement? Oh, she's not coming back. Okay, then, can I still make a brief announcement? Would like to extend a very happy, I don't know how old, birthday to Mr. McManus.
Thank you. It's called maturity.
Yeah, mature.
More motur.
All right, so all items, with the exception of I and K, first, second, all of them, by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, that's a six, zero. Let's go ahead and jump into I. You with Cape Fear Community College, Oxytocic Therapy, Lip Therapy, Educational Interpreter, yes, speaking, college intern. We'll have to vote on this, because. So, all of the favor of, letter I, by saying aye. Any discussion?
Actually, I have questions for you, but I haven't answered, and so I think one, if you, the question was, why is, you, 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 you,
I'll answer that. So, these MOUs for student interns are processed and created as the request for an internship comes in, and we would not have any school psychology interns through Cape Fear Community College, and we don't have any current requests for school psychology internships.
Other discussion? If not, on favor of I, by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, that's a five, zero.
Um, yeah, thank you. Ms. Barnhart sent us an email that said, that gave us a heads up on policy 1310, that we were going to be talking about today, and I'm trying to find the words. In her email, she mentioned that they had to be, we wanted to make sure that they were included in school improvement plans, and so that's why I wanted to hold it back and send it to, back to the, the, I'm reading it, because it was in here, the, it didn't have district-wide, we're allowed, bringing the policy, they had the bill to walk through into, shh. Okay, hold on, speaking, still reading. Oh, it says, as, as chair, she didn't mention school improvement plans, it says, as policy chair, and as I stated, I didn't want to pass a policy prior to being able to share the operational parts, and then in that policy, when we, in the policy that we're going to be reading, it says that they, this parent involvement plan has to be part of the school improvement plan, and so when I read through the school improvement plans, I didn't look closely for that, and I'm just asking the question for clarity, assuming that our executive directors and our chief academic officer did review those and make sure that there was an adequate parent involvement plan in there, I just wanted to make that clear, or make that clear to all of us.
Ms. Crable, correct.
Yes.
And we're actually talking with our principals now on weaving in more items with the school improvement plan, this would not stop us from approving the school improvement plan, because if you keep in mind, it is a living document, tonight, what we're doing is, we're approving the low-performing school improvement plans after having them on the website for feedback from the public, and we have not received any, so by statute, now we have to approve them. But we are working with our principals to incorporate parent involvement in the school improvement plan.
Okay, thank you, and so I guess that's what my point was, when Ms. Barnhart had stated that she didn't want to go ahead until the school had had the, schools and the central office staff had the opportunity to make sure that was happening, so that's what I'm just, okay, just trying to get a handle on, is that are we putting the cart before the apple cart, that.
Oh.
Whatever that is.
We're getting.
Horse before the apple cart, sorry, a cart before the horse, yes. The, and so the, the school improvement plan is integral, just like our strategic plans are integral, and I'm, I mean, I know you guys have done a lot, a lot of training and updating of our, of our principals, so I'm guessing that when they, because our school improvement plans are living documents, that they have gone back and put into place, so that's what I just want to hear out loud.
So what we're doing is, we do have parent involvement with the school plans, but to get the parent bill right, want to even, we want to make that stronger, so we are actually going through and working with the principals, they've got some information in their leadership update, to do that with their leadership team, it will not, approving this policy will not change anything with that, but we're asking them to beef up the school improvement plans, parent involvement more in the school improvement plans that they currently have, but as, again, the school improvement plans are a living, breathing document, so this will not change anything, this is just per statute, we have to approve these low-performing plans tonight, by the date.
Even if they do not have a, an adequate parent involvement plan?
Even, yes, they have to be approved tonight to be. Even, yes, they have to be approved tonight to be in compliance with the law, and they do have components of parent involvement, but it's not to the level that we think it should be. Because a lot of our schools have parent involvement plans that are not, won't put in improvement plans. So some of them have them separate, and we're going to weave it in together.
So which law is more important? The school improvement plan, approv- approval law, or the parental involvement, get the wording right, law?
So I can answer that.
Okay, thank you.
We have to have the parent bill of rights.
Correct.
Okay, and so we continue to work throughout the year in our school improvement plans. What we have to understand is that every school looks different.
Right.
Parental involvement looks different. Some schools will have more, some schools will have adopted parents who are supportive. And so, I mean, you can write it on paper in there, but they're not enacting it, but what we want to make sure is that they do have a, a parent section in the school improvement plan.
And we'll come back and we fill in the blanks later?
We have to make sure as, as it's going, because you don't want to overcommit and they don't do it. So we have to, the, the school improvement plans are, that's not a district.
It's a school, right?
It's a school, and each school will continue to work to get the parent involvement in there. All of these schools, and I shouldn't say all, the schools, the majority of those schools that are listed are Title I, so they also have a Title I plan, so they have to have the Title I nights, they have to do those things, so they have, as Dr. Faison was saying, they will have plans on another, another plan that also involves parental involvement. So the two mesh, so when we bring them together, you'll see a Title I plan, and you'll also see the school improvement plan.
Okay, I understand that part. It, it doesn't really get to my question, but I understand that part. The, I'm, I'm just kind of looking at, do, does, do the words really matter? Because if the words really matter, then we have other policies that we're going to get to where words really matter. So I'm just trying to figure that part out.
So what would you like to see in the school improvement plan?
No, I, what I would like to see, when it's, when it's ready to happen, is what the schools are actually going to do. I mean, I'm not opposed to that at all. I mean, and I'm just asking, when, when our EDs and our chief academic officer, when they review that, you know, are they reviewing those plans? Because this is very critical for the Parent, Parental Rights Act. I mean, they are telling us exactly what we got to do, and if we're, and, and if we don't do it, somebody's in trouble. So I don't want our principals to be in trouble, I don't want our executive directors to be in trouble, you know, Dr. Faison, and/or you, or us, that we have, because we essentially are approving these, and by approving these, we're saying that we agree with everything that's in them. And if everything is in them is not accurate, then I just, I'm having a little bit of posit with that, but I just want somebody to say that somebody's looking at them.
So we do look at?
Craybill, let me just clarify, they are accurate.
They are, yes.
They are accurate.
We don't put this in front of you.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry, Dr. Faison. We do, these are accurate. This is what's going on, and they have to, if you'll look by, you'll see the dates, there are dates on there.
Mm-hmm, I did.
They update those, so I don't want us to, I want to dispel that these aren't accurate or we're just fudging on it. That's not what we're doing. And we would never do that.
No, and, and I am not, I'm not suggesting that we are. I was just asking what was the level of review.
And Mr. McManus had a question?
I'll just make a comment for simplicity. It's a working document. That means that you can change it every day, you can look at it anytime, so, and, and that's the advantage of being a strong document, is that you can change, nothing is locked in, so just thought I'd share that.
I'm good with that, thank you, I'm good.
Thank you, okay, so we, at this point, all, we have, I'll make a motion to approve item K.
Second.
Approval of student, improvement, approval of school improvement plans. Thank you, have a second? All, any other discussion? Not all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passes six zero. Moving on to policies, we did add policy 1310, but we'll do that after. We do have the policy amendments as provided. Ms. Barnhart.
Mr. Willoughby, for our discussion and the agenda review, I do recall members wanting to pull off 4300, but I would make a recommendation at this time to pass the policies as presented, with the exception of 4300.
So pulling forty, pulling 4300, all the others as provided, we have a first and a second, any discussion? Ms. Craybill?
Yes, I want to, I made the, told you, I was going to make the motion that I want to pull it off, because we either discuss it here, we either hold it until later in the meeting, after we've had the EDI discussion, or we pull it off and discuss it, because equitable, the, the words in there are not appropriate, that we, the words that we are striking are not appropriate, to ensure an equitable treatment of all students. Ms. Barnhart, I don't know why she is now saying to push it through, when she said she would change the words to be, ensure dignity, respect, and fair treatment, and...
Point of order, I said I, to, to approve the policies except 4300, is what the motion I made.
We'll call 4300 off.
So.
So we'll discuss it.
You said no, that, I made a motion and you said, all right, that I misunderstood.
Okay, so we're going to, everything except for 4300, is, we have a motion, I'll second that, first and second, or I think Ms. Bradford's already, already seconded it. So we have first and second, all, is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor of passing all policies with the exception of 4300, as provided here, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, that passes six zero. We will now discuss 4300. Ms. Craybill?
Yeah, the, I, I'll say it again, is that I am opposed, and I think that our board needs to discuss the, the item in 4300, which states that we want to strike the words, ensuring a system that, a system that ensures equitable treatment of all students. I'm in favor of every, of the other changes presented to us by NCSBA, and I just don't think that we want to go down that route of taking out, that's why I was trying to get a little bit specific, if words don't really matter, then why take these words out?
Okay. Other discussion on that topic? So we're talking about the, the first paragraph, what is, at least on my copy, is blue. Sorry, yes, ma'am?
Mr. Chairman, I had sent the board an email after some conversations with members of being uncomfortable with my suggestion of the ensure equitable treatment. I sent an email to the full board, and I said I would be willing to add proposed language if it's the will of the board to add ensure dignity, respect, and fair treatment of all students, rather than just simply strike to replace with those verbiage. And so if that's the will of the board to do that. But I, I went into detail in our policy committee meeting, when discussing ensuring equitable treatment, and what does that look like? And it came down to a discussion of metrics. How do we measure it? And the reality is, when you look at discipline metrics, it comes down to outcome. I have been very vocal about we need to be proactive and talk about the inputs that we're doing for our students, but we've had multiple discussions, not just on this dais and work sessions with staff, that discipline is a concern. And so for me, to sit here and say, I know that providing that language is, how we get judged by that is the data, the outcome data. It has nothing to do with the, with the input that we're doing with students, the interventions, the different things that I was working on. I had feedback from different staff members, one just said, looking at how you are consistently implementing discipline. It does not take that into account. It is, it's all about just the end-up demographic, and so for me, that's where I was coming from. If the language of adding those words in, what I just said, ensure dignity, respect, and fair treatment of all students helps the board understand, I do believe we're on the same page, but knowing that that metric and how that metric is measured of discipline and correlating it to outcome, I have a hard time keeping it in there.
Can you say those words one more time, please? Where's yours proposed?
Ensure dignity, respect, and fair treatment of all students.
Respect and fair treatment. Okay, is there a second to, we have a first and second discussion, Ms. Craybill?
Yes, so I am drawing a blank, and rather than embarrass myself again because I couldn't remember, we had this discussion earlier, when we were, I think it was talking about maybe the counseling program or another program, where Ms. Barnhart had suggested, instead of the word equitable, that we put fair and consistent, and the board voted that down. So why would we now change our mind that fair and consistent and dignity, respect, and fair, they're the same thing? And I guess I just would like, and maybe this comes up in our conversation later, but I don't understand the fear of the word equity, and what some people on our board are thinking is wrong with meeting students where they are. It's our dang mission statement, and we're going to go against that just because we don't like these words? I mean, we're going to have to change so many things. You know, we have to change our mission, our vision, our strategic plan, just to take out the word equitable, that's like, oh my God, it's going to go into the bad word category. You know, that if our kid says it, you know, then they're going to be in trouble. I just am having a hard time, discipline metrics, how do we measure consistent implementation? I'm just wondering what staff member told you that it's, that we, discipline is about, all about the demographic? Maybe I heard you say that wrong, but I can't imagine one person on our staff saying anything about the demographics when considering what discipline is appropriate for a student.
Any other discussion? If not, we have a motion to add the following words to that, to policy 4300, ensure dignity, respect, and fair treatment for all students. Motion and second?
Mr. Willoughby, point of order, I just, so that we don't make the same mistake again. The, the motion should be, strike those words in blue and add these words instead, because I messed up and I wasn't given a chance to correct that on policy 2315.
Okay, so to be correct, to strike as?
I'm making a motion to change her motion, to make it more specific, and she can do it if she wants.
Strike section, the blue section, number two, and then add the words I just read. Ms. Booey, would you please call the roll?
Would you please read the words?
I will read the words one more time, absolutely. So we're going to strike a system that ensures equitable treatment of all students and insert ensure dignity, respect, and fair treatment for all students. Is that correct, Ms. Barnhart?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We have a first and second. Ms. Booey, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
She's not here?
And Ms. Craybill?
No.
So that passes five to one. Now we have to vote on the whole motion, which is to accept policy 4300 as amended. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there a second? We have a first and second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
That passes five to one. We move on to policy 1310.
And, and I'm happy to lead this discussion to start. Mr. Willoughby, their policy 1310 slash 4002, I had forwarded to, okay, it is up there, perfect. When I was preparing for the policy committee meeting, like I said earlier, we had discussed that in our last policy committee meeting, why it was not on the agenda is that our staff was not ready to roll out and walk through the rollout of everything. And so there was a discussion, and the committee decided to not bring this policy forth before the board, because our staff was not ready to roll out, and we wanted an opportunity to bring it forth. When looking at the scheduling, as Dr. Faust said, he said, if this gets on the policy, or not, not policy, the regular agenda, 1310, 4002, then we would not have to have a specially called meeting. The plan is still in the policy meeting in December, to work through all the mechanics to go through this policy in great detail. It'll be the primary focus of the policy meeting in December. But this, if the board wants to, gives an opportunity to pass it and be in compliance with the law, because the law of the Parents' Bill of Rights says, as January 1, we just have to have the policy adopted. Technically, it doesn't say we have to have all the mechanics implemented, we could have passed this policy three months ago and had nothing of the sort. So I personally don't want to do that, and I said that, I was one of the two committee votes to not bring it forth before policy. However, I understand with the holiday time, there is not, nothing in there that I object to, I've looked it over in great detail, but I would just like the opportunity for our staff to walk through it so that everybody's on the same page. So I do think this is a little bit backwards, but I do respect the suggestion, and wanted to bring it forth to you, board members, tonight for the final say.
Do we have a motion to move forward policy, or to accept policy 1310? No, no, they need a first. We, we need a first. Okay, we have a motion.
Motion to accept policy 1310.
Okay, so Ms. Bradford with a motion. Is there a second? Hearing none, that's defeated, so that will stay in policy. So we will be calling a meeting, special meeting. Yes, Ms. Craybill?
The, can I just ask, before this comes back to the policy committee meeting, and I haven't compared it word for word, the, are all the things that we're seeing in blue those that are required of us by the bill? Or are any of those words, are anything extra added by us?
We'll go through all of that in policy.
Can we just, can we just answer yes or no?
I, I have forwarded the NCSBA edits to our team, and the feedback from them, the policy that I shared today, everybody's in favor with. So to my knowledge, I don't know if they might have added a few words here or there, but to my knowledge, everybody's on the same page.
And Dr. Faust is confirming, or agreeing that they're?
Yes, and Ms. Varnum and Dr. Faison are both a part of the policy. If neither of you want to jump in and share insight, I have, after they speak, I have something I want to ask of them.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just share, and to kind of clarify, for example, the parental involvement planning part, the policy as it's, as it's written is, of course, to comply with the collection of rights and responsibilities under the Parents' Bill of Rights, and it does say, for example, in the parent involvement section, that the board directs its principal to ensure that a school improvement plan is developed, or develops a plan for the school's parental involvement program. So it says, you know, the board is directing this to be done, not that the board is assuring this has already been completed. So this is about future work to be put into place between now and the timelines that come forward in the next, either in the beginning of 2024 or at the beginning of the next school year. And for that reason, as a whole senior leadership team, we have worked through different areas and have built this into our implementation plan for the Parents' Bill of Rights. So I would say this is ready to, for us to be held in compliance.
I will just ditto what Ms. Varnum said, and it just goes back to what we were talking about, the school improvement plans. When we were reviewing this policy, we wanted to make sure, we realized that we wanted to go back and even tighten up our school improvement plans. So everything is fine the way there are, it is now, but we have time to actually do those things, and the policy is ready. I don't see a reason why we would hold it, because we are already, in the policy meeting, we will be sharing with you, the Parent Bill of Rights, an overview of the website, and the things that we've done. So we feel very comfortable what, that we're meeting the requirements, more than meeting them.
Ms. Bradford?
Mr. Chair, pointing information, I think that we defeated talking about it tonight. Yeah, Dr. Faust had said earlier, if we didn't do it tonight, then we had to come up with a date. I have an extreme problem with those dates in that week. Can we do this in a Zoom meeting rather than an in-person meeting? Because other than that, you know, you're going to put me in a real bind.
Mr. Walker, would you just be careful?
So before I can speak to the board, I just, I just need for the board to give us, we need to, we can't walk away without a date. And the, and, sorry, and the reason why is, so today is the fifth. It's got to be done, or by the fifteenth, the, the sixth. Tomorrow, we have, I have one-on-ones with board members. We have superintendent advisory committee on the seventh. I'll be in Raleigh. On the eighth. On the eighth, um, I have one-on-ones, we have, we're going over the, the Bill of Rights, we have department budget meetings, that's with the staff. Um, and then the next week on the 11th, um, because remember, this is a tight month. I have one-on-ones with board members, um, things that we have to do. We have the DOJ Town Hall, um, other meetings. Then I have more one-on-ones. We have the policy committee on the 12th. The 13th, well, the, the problem is, um, I mean, it can be, but my question is, what's going to change?
Mr. Chair, I may, I make a motion to reconsider, um, voting on policy 1310 slash 4002.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a first and second to reconsider voting 1310. Ms. Cravill?
So a couple of things, nobody has said yes or no on did we add any extra words? They've just said they're happy with it and I'm okay with that. But-
I did not add any extra words to 1310.
Thank you. So, okay, so she, Julie has, Ms. Varnum has gone on record of saying that. And Dr. Fason, I haven't heard her say that, but I did hear her say-
I, I did not add anything to 1310 as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, my next point was, I did hear Dr. Fason say, I thought I heard Dr. Fason say, that when we talked about this policy, um, at the policy committee meeting, then we would be hearing a plan or hearing an overview. And I would like to hear that overview, um, before I vote on a policy that is, even though it's the law, I want to hear about it to make sure that we all hear about it with that. So if I misunderstood Dr. Fason, that there's going to be more information provided to us on how we are going to get there, then, um, I want to hear that. And if it's ready tonight, I'm, I will make a motion to extend our time. If it's not ready tonight, then I want to hear it at policy.
So at, at policy, what we plan to do is show the website and walk you through the website, not the policy. Unless the policy's not accepted, but the, this is the North Carolina School Board Association policy that was adapted and it works, this one works. All we're doing is going through and the board will have to vote, um, on a date, um, to enact, is it July, not July 1, if it's January 1, there's some acceptance that we have to do. That's the only other thing that we have.
Bradford?
Um, Mr. Chair, is there, let me throw out an option here. Is there any reason why we can't adopt this tonight? If we had the vote, if it was the pleasure of the board, and then also put it on the 12th committee meeting to tweak it if necessary? And then we can go through all those steps on the 12th, but we-
That is the plan, yes ma'am.
We're legally compliant tonight.
Okay, so we do have a motion, second to reconsider, uh, approving 1310. We've had discussion, uh, so this is to reconsider, to pass 1310. Um, all those in favor, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passes six zero. It is passed. New business, uh-
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
I make a motion-
I think technically you passed the motion to reconsider it and now it's time for you to reconsider it.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes, sir. You are correct. So now we have in front of us the policy 1310, um, all those, we had, do we have a motion to, uh, pass that?
I would make a motion to pass policy 1310 slash 4002 with the understanding that we will be going through it in depth and the policy committee will have an opportunity to present further details, um, or questions of concerns and bring it back before the board if necessary.
Okay, so there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
First and second, other discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Passes six zero. New business, uh, 2024-25 budget calendar. Ms. Sutton?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, I've provided the budget calendar to you for your review, um, for informational purposes. As you know, this is another living document that will adjust as need be. Um, I did want to draw your attention to, um, in February, there is a budget work session that we'll have to schedule. And so I'll get together with Mr. Willoughby and we'll schedule a time for that. Um, and I'm here to answer any questions, if you had questions about the calendar as it is now.
Board members, any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Hearing none? That was easy, thank you, Ms. Sutton. Okay, Mr. Uh, just when you're about to sit down.
All county commissioners, have we, we're going to go through a process of meeting. So you're still including that potential annual lack of-
I'm sorry, one more time, can you say that question again?
I said, we can change or adjust after we meet with the county commissioners, depending on what transpires.
Yes, so yes, so this document, at any point, if the, um, board would like to make adjustments, we can do that.
Any other questions, board members? If not, move on to, uh, item B under new business, which is Career Readiness Academy at Mosley. Uh, I don't know if Dr. Faust or, uh, Dr. Fason can lead that? Dr. Fason?
So first, I want to make sure that, um, I start with saying, I apologize for any confusion with the presentation at the agenda review. Um, I wish I had done the two separate, but, um, I did not want to, um, share anything with our parents without sharing with the board that when we looked at our data and the discussion and looked at, um, Mosley, um, when I say data, I'm talking about the number of students and, um, we have tried in the past to actually increase the number that the best thing we felt was to develop individualized plans for the 52 students that would be left there and make sure that they, we could work with a counselor and the schools, our specialty small schools, to see if they could go that route. Uh, and I did not make that clear at the agenda review and I apologize for that. That has nothing to do with the newcomer school, that is still hypothetical and depending on a number of things. But when we look at, um, our students and go back and look at the history of the school, we felt it was best for these students, um, to be able to get some other opportunities and just best overall for the district. So I want to apologize with that. And I'll ask, answer any questions. We had spoken with the teachers. We do have a plan. I spoke, I actually had a chance to speak with Ms. Wooten today, um, about the opportunities for some of the students to, um, have the opportunity to go to WEX. We have already spoken, um, with our other specialty schools and we want to make sure we give these students a preference and, um, to this because we know that they, um, benefit from that small environment. We will also be meeting with parents, um, individually, Ms. Jean Call, who is the innovative supervisor of specialty programs. She is working with the teachers and the students there to make transition plans. We are really trying, we do individual planning for each and every student to make sure they land in the best place for them.
I'm going to start now, I'll go to someone else. I'm, I'm still confused because, you know, we talked about it last week, we're going to have this other school that's going to be there possibly, and all of a sudden, within a week, all of a sudden it's happening and we're, you know, this kind of thing. So I'm confused, um, exactly, you know, when are you going to present to the board or are you going to present to the board a, uh, full plan, you know, because these students are very important, uh, all our students are, but these students are very, very important. Uh, and I think, I'm not speaking for everyone on the board, I'm speaking for myself, my heart went out to them today for sure. I, I, I don't think there's anybody that would disagree, but maybe there would be. But I think we need to have a consent, a, a, a full plan before we start deciding to close schools and, and that kind of thing. I think that needs to be brought to the board. But any- Bradford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have jotted three notes. As a board member, I did not know about this. I was not consulted and I made no vote. I want to make that clear. Some speaker said tonight, three board members did such and such. I didn't know and I, and I believe that my fellow board members didn't know either. Um, second, we heard on Tuesday, a suggestion and at some point between Tuesday and Thursday, parents got letters that said very coldly, your school was closing and you were going to be relocated. The com, lack of compassion in that, I apologize for it, I really do, you guys. Um, it wasn't what I would have liked to have seen happen if we had voted to close your school. So, um, I, I, I hope we, you know, we talk, we talk all about inclusivity all the time, but it wasn't very inclusive, that letter that you got that said, we're closing your school, sorry. It didn't even say sorry. Um, and number three, I would ask central office staff, is there any other option than we heard from five students tonight who are extremely upset? I know out of 60, that's not a, a huge number, but they're extremely upset. And, and I'd like to know, is there any other option in what you're planning? It kind of looked like you've been planning this for quite some time and I just want to make sure that this is the only way you can possibly do this and that these kids are taken care of.
I, I can tell you, Ms. Sorry, I'm sorry. I, oh, I was trying to say something. I can tell you, Ms. Bradford, that the students, we really want to work with each and every student. Again, I apologize because I think, I thought today that we were sharing that word, our, the recommendation and where we were moving forward with that. I think the confusion with newcomers got into that, so that was the intent. As far as an other option, that is why we want to work with the students and get them to, like I said, the other specialties that we have that have that small feel as much as possible.
Ms. Mason?
Um, as a parent, I had a hard time listening to the mom who was here, who was expressing her concerns and it really actually just very much reminded me of my own experience when my children were redistricted. And I don't want that for these kids because it was a difficult thing for my family and I'm sure it would be a difficult thing for them as well.
Other board members?
I just wanted to add that, um, Dr. Faust explained to us what happened, wasn't happy about it, that's not my decision, that's his. Um, I do want to seek alternatives for our Mosley students to be placed in a school where they can succeed and thrive. And, um, so whatever that looks like, I will support, but, um, it is going to come at a cost and I, I know we, we've heard that what, how much is too much, but I, I, I really just want those students to be where they should be, um, to be successful. I was a part of communities and schools when the CR, the Career Readiness Academy was brought to Mosley in 2008, um, in conjunction with grant money from the Bill Gates Foundation. And, um, it was operated, you know, in partnership with communities and schools until 2015, when the school district, um, decided that, um, that we didn't need communities and schools there anymore because they had enough supports and that was fine. So I just, um, I, my heart goes out for these kids. Equitable treatment, we have some of us up here saying that they wouldn't want that for their kids, where there's a lot of things that, um, were about to dissolve, um, that we, I don't want those for any kids. So I don't think we can have it, you know, both ways. We're going to have to just figure out what is best for this student population and I trust that the school system is going to do that and look at alternatives, you know, at C-Tech, maybe at New Hanover, in their own special area. We created this school for a reason and now we're, we're giving it up and I, I hate to say that, I mean, I, I read everything that Dr. Faust told us and I understand it, I absorbed it. But when it comes right down to it, you know, I, I thought of the Williston example where those kids weren't given the opportunity to graduate from their high school, we just moved them. And this kind of felt like that. The, um, I'm just wondering why we took in a freshman class knowing that the school wasn't, was considered to be not viable? Um, maybe there's something we can do, but we're going to have to do, um, and this, Ms. Bradford, in your, in your finance committee discussions, you know, and, and our talks with, um, one-on-one with the senior staff and Dr., well, Dr. Faust, you know, we're going to have to, um, we're going to have to weigh some things and figure out how best it fits in.
Ms. Barnhart? Ms. Barnhart, Ms. McManus?
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know if this isn't a, maybe this is an appropriate question that's not really going to be answered tonight, but something that can look in and then the board can be better informed. But it, it came up a few months ago about the RISE program and how can we duplicate that at different schools? And I've, when I've talked to different admins, um, they've, they've talked about, you know, sometimes it would be a great idea, even if, if there was a school within a school. And so if, um, I understand the feasibility and transportation and stuff like that, but when we're looking at the development plan, I wonder if there's, you know, when you're, when you guys are looking for ideas and suggestions to be able to present to us, to kind of have that kind of rollout of potentially a school within a school? That's maybe, it might look different on location to location and I don't, I don't know if this is a directive, but, um, when, when we're brainstorming and trying to problem solve and I understand, um, you know, we, we were given certain teacher ratios and things we have to do with the best of our abilities, but that was one, um, feedback and really interesting conversation that I had with the principal to say, is there a way that we can do that so that they can be responsive to the needs of their students? And so, um, hearing the conversation tonight, I value it, I just, I would like the board maybe just to have a consensus to say, I'd like to look into that and see what you guys come up with because we have a team of really hardworking staff and so to be cognizant of being responsive to the needs of students and what does that look like with the budget that we're given, I think is one way we can move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Barnhart, Ms. McManus?
It appears to me that every discussion we have, somehow budget and finances are creeping into a, into a, if I remember what I read, this went from, you know, where we received a hundred and fifty thousand dollar year grant?
It was like an original.
Was that correct, Ashley? I'm sorry. And so when it switched over, especially it lost it?
We still receive some federal money, it's a different pot of money, but we still receive some money, um, specific to that school.
May I ask how much it is we're receiving compared to what we were receiving?
It's still around a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
Um, but that grant is getting ready to end at the end of this year too, so-
So am I understanding that losing that grant mean we'd have to find a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
It's actually three hundred and fifty, sorry, three hundred and fifty thousand-
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
This year, yes, approximately.
Okay. Well, I, even Ms. Barnhart, we probably need to have a discussion about all this. So we have everything that we can do. There's a lot of stuff out there I don't think we all grasp right now.
I'd like to make a suggestion or a motion that we, uh, put this on our January, uh, meeting. Not a work session, our, our meeting so we can, so it doesn't, you know, go out of our minds, or we, we can readdress exactly how, you know, we, we are looking at, um, you know, taking care of the students, uh, from Mosley.
Second.
We have a first to put this back on there.
Was that a motion or a suggestion?
That was a motion.
Okay.
Motion to, um, keep the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley discussion, uh, to pick it up in the January meeting. And we have a first and second, any discussion? Ms. Barnhart?
My only discussion, uh, I mean, going off of what I just talked to Mr. Mc, Mr. McManus of potentially exploring the options, if you were to look at a variety of things, would you be prepared for a January to really have some quality suggestions?
So, so I'm just going to jump in. Um, we're continually discussing how to address the prioritized needs of our students across the board. And when we are aware of prioritized needs, we have to figure out how to balance and we would love for that not to include budget and finance. I'm not going to look at Ashley when I say that. We would love for it not to include that because we would love to think and to, and to know that we're funded to be able to do everything that we believe is important for every single student. So- So I, I want to issue a commitment openly for our students, that we will do everything possible to match them with the programs that also still provide them supports, but we also have to realize that it's not about necessarily removing a program, it's about understanding there's a prioritize, there's a priority need, or a more substantial need, or an equally important need, maybe more important need, for students such as a newcomer school, such as students with extreme, challenging, extensive, not expensive, but extensive disabilities that need programs. And we have to balance all of that, and those are really tough discussions, they're tough decisions, and we know they, they impact individual student lives, individual students' families. So that dialogue, matching that support to every student is going to be extremely important, and this has been, you know, discussion over time, and how to match student needs with the services and resources that we have. So given that we, we don't have endless resources, it's about matching. And of course, we'll be ready to talk about, and I'm going to speak for my team, and Dr. Fason, and Dr. Faust, and the rest, that we'll be ready to talk about what we know about our student needs, but we also want to make sure we're having those conversations with our students, their teachers, the staff, the families, to make sure that that match happens.
Okay. Ms. McManus?
Just because I'm trying to put it all perspective, and I hate to throw you under the bus, the charter school arena, which has been expanded now from the latest legislation, what amount of money did, was taken out of our funds this past year for the charter school, because we have to pay for it if you're domiciled in our county?
It was a little over seven million.
So we spent seven million dollars last year for the charter school arena. Is my understanding correct this year that the money's almost doubled?
It will be higher this year.
Depending on income.
Right.
But it's expanded the income arena.
Right, because in the past, virtual charter schools received a lower amount, it was just seven hundred and ninety per student, and now they get the same allocation as traditional charter schools, so that's going to go up quite a bit.
So we could consider those ten million dollars that we could use to keep whatever school. Well, and who passed that legislation? Now, I'm not trying to be smart, I'm just trying to be, let you know what's going on. That money comes from us. Every single child that's domiciled can go to school in Texas, and we have to pay for it if they're domiciled here. So just, just so people understand, again, how finances force our hand, or don't give us the opportunity to force our hand.
We have a motion and a second in front of us to move the career, or to keep the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley discussion, and move it to old business in the January.
I think it's postponed is the word you're looking for?
Well, no, because we're going to, we're just going to do it again, so we want to hear what's, what's going to happen, so it's not to postpone, but we've had the discussion, we want to do it again, so it's a redo, I guess, is the proper one. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those. Okay. Zero. We move down to letter C, Equity Diversity Inclusion Committee.
Can we have everyone mute their mic? We're giving feedback. If you're speaking, then turn your mic on, if not, please mute it, it's giving feedback.
All righty, that's what was in my ear. Okay. At this point, we have our Equity Diversity Inclusion Committee discussion. Ms. Mason?
I'd like to make a motion to dissolve the EDI committee as of January one, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, we have a motion to dissolve the EDI committee. January one, two, one, four. We have a second discussion, please. Bradford?
During the agenda review meeting, I believe it was October, we discussed the EDI committee at length, and at that meeting, sorry, at that meeting, an invitation was extended to the board members who were not on the committee to come and see what was going on in that committee, to come and understand. And even though many of us who aren't on that committee watch it online, there was an invitation laid down, "Come." Almost like a challenge. So I came last night, and immediately upon arriving, before I could even put my things down, I was disrespected by someone here, a school employee. In addition, no single committee member or my fellow board members who had invited me to be there were welcoming. There was no professionalism or control of self on display last night, except for the sole central office representative, Dr. Barnes, who was present from the committee. The only exception to this was a solitary committee member who had an exchange, a pleasant exchange with me, shook my hand at the end of the meeting. It was a disgraceful display of temper tantrum. My comments are on record from the October meeting. I said, if we are going to keep the committee, it needed to be reorganized to be more inclusive of our multi-language students, M L students, for those who keep up with our acronyms, military family students, homeless students, immigrant students, i.e. all students. So I came and I saw. I was very disappointed, I was appalled. I saw no appreciation of diversity of thought, I saw no inclusion, I saw a great deal of hate. Vice Chair Mason is due an apology. After what I saw and heard last night, I am not in favor of continuing this committee. I will vote to disband it.
And if I could hear anyone to speak in favor of keeping EDI. Ms. Cravill?
Okay, so, well, first of all, I may have to step out, my, my heart is palpitating right now, and so I'm, I'm just going to try and break up, I'm going to try and, if I could leave my, yeah, hands to yourself on your own microphone. So Ms. Bradford was there, and she was on her phone the whole time, didn't even make eye contact with anybody during the meeting. No, Ms. Bradford, poo, point of order on you, let me just talk. Oh, my God. Sorry, I apologize, but can I keep going? Ms. Mason refused to acknowledge why she wanted the EDI committee, why she even ran on the platform of not having EDI, when asked several times. She said that the committee is not doing anything, the strategic plan, we only have one goal, and it has been accomplished, we have no forward momentum, I don't want to waste people's time, when several committee members, there was no hate in that room, and there was no disrespect, and anybody can go back and watch, the people on that committee were very respectful in the way they presented their topics. One of the, one topic was, one counterpoint to that that was brought up was, so are we saying that if, if, if a committee doesn't work, and it didn't meet its goal, then we're getting rid of it, and we're just striking it out of the strategic plan? Do we, do we, did we say that just because we've met our goal, now we take our eye off of it? We talked about EC disproportionality and least restrictive environment, we talked about, well, I shouldn't say we, I was a listener, I was invited, and I sat in the audience like we do at other board committee meetings, like policy, you know, people don't come, we, we, we can sit up here on the dais. But at one point, several people asked Ms. Mason to step down from her committee, because if she wasn't happy with the way the committee was going, why didn't she lead us in a better direction? The, somebody said, oh, Ms. Mason said, "We need an audit to identify all the inaccuracies in local data," and she was asked, "What inaccuracies are you talking about?" And she didn't want to answer that. The, she said that she had interviewed people, and the words came to mind, "Who was your authoritative source that you went to for feedback?" The, another board member, I mean, another committee member who is not a school system employee, had done research and showed that the top twelve schools in our district, I mean, in our state, all have EDI officers. They may not have a committee, because they may not need a committee. But when asked also, "Where do you see us going? What is the alternative? If we get rid of EDI committee, do you see us having a school advisory? Do you see us having any other avenue for these voices to be heard?" And especially if the board votes and decides in our budget that we are not going to have an office of, of EDI anymore. So then who's in charge? The, the beauty of the Title IX committee is that we do, we have a Title IX coordinator whose job specifically it is to manage and oversee this, and make recommendations to the superintendent. If we take away the EDI board committee, there's nobody to advise, and if we take away our chief equity officer, there's nobody to advise. Actually, there's a lot of people to advise, but nobody has, the, the buck stops, and the buck will stop with our superintendent. I also just want to make the point that we have heard so many, even of our agenda items, about where equity and diversity and inclusion are important, and it's work we're already doing. We want to bring a newcomer school that has equity, diversity, and inclusion written all over it. We, we, we talk about, we have great programs for recruiting and retaining teachers, trying to make sure that our teachers, students have teachers that look like them and they can relate to, so I am happy that we're doing that. But there are just so many, I mean, you have to listen, I was writing notes, you know, as fast as I could write notes, the, about that, so it was just, I, I think the committee made all very good points, they even, and you can see it at your desk, and it was even emailed to us this morning, the, the questions that the committee brought forth, and the community had given input to the members of the committee, and I don't even see us even taking the time to discuss those. So I, I'm, I'm just having like a, a real hard time with us saying that we want what's best for all of our students, every student, no matter what demographic you fall into, whether we report to the, the state, or the feds, or not, it's the right thing to do. Ms. Varnum just said that, that we were going to make it, make it work for our students in whatever capacity we can. And to, I'm not saying that we, we, that disbanding this committee would be the end-all, be-all, but we have to have a plan in place, and I think it's just very short-sighted of us to, and for all the people out there listening that are thinking, my voice is now not going to be heard, and my voice and my opinions don't matter.
Where are we on time as far as this goes?
Well, we, if they have ten minutes, we'll, we'll figure it right out.
Yeah. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to continue discussion.
Okay.
For ten more minutes.
Ten more minutes. First and second, all in favor of granting ten minutes at this point? Do you have ten minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We'll add ten minutes, Ms. Mason?
So I have two rules here. The meeting last night was discussed, so I will take that rule first. I attended that meeting. I'm not really going to discuss how it went. I did not feel respected, but despite that, I sat and I listened and I took notes, and I did what I've been doing for the past year, I listened and I took notes. There were two motions made throughout the entirety of our, my, my tenure on that board, and the two motions were made last night. The two motions were, the board recommends to keep EDI active and engaged, and the committee, I'm sorry, the committee recommends to keep EDI active and engaged, and the committee recommends that we answer questions posed by the committee. The list, the questions that I passed out this evening are updated, the highlighted questions were added later in the day. On that, it is discussed that we have, they're willing to let us do research and to find out more information for up to six months. So in that message, we don't have to answer these questions. Tonight, they asked for them to be answered by the end of the school year. Taking that hat off, and sitting as an individual on this particular board, there is an overlap of the committee work between the EDI committee and other committees within the district. EC committee addresses our exceptional kids. AIG committee addresses our AIG students. We have services and support for military families, I receive emails and information about military support, because I am a military family. We, there are, there is support for our multi-language learner families, and for our underserved populations, we have support for that. And the question has been raised to me, where is the accountability going to come from? Well, we do already have things in place that do hold our district accountable. We have an H R department that brings any and all concerns to us as a board when they arise, and we have Ethics 360 for our students as well. So we do have the ability to make sure that our students are treated fairly, and that they're receiving what they need. I just don't see a need for the overlap.
First, let me address Ms. Bradford, since she, she's going to claim a point of order, and I'm going to claim a point of order back, because she opened the door for this conversation. I say that she, history, three board members here ran and were elected, they ran to do away with the EDI committee. They've admitted that, I've actually shared that here at the board with the GOP message. If you go back and search what they ran on, and that was their choice, and they got elected, but it just didn't happen, it just wasn't because of one or two or three incidents, this was planned from the beginning. When I've been on.
Point of order.
Point of order back.
Ms. Mason? You are at, you are at order, and you can't talk about our motives, or.
Okay.
Let's talk about what happened, or the, the topic in front of us. The chair rules.
Well, the fact is, well, it ruled and put me out. Three board members ran against it, there's four that are going to vote against it, it's a done deal. And when somebody surprises and says something when they've been in the leadership position for a full year, and really has never discussed, and I won't go into the rest of it, but if you want to know about it, you can watch last night, and, and judge for yourself what you believe, what you don't.
Uh, just a question there, uh, one, I don't know, think about this, after watching last session. Which I did watch from home. We have six goals or pillars in our strategic plan, we have one board member that talks about, and I think it is, very important, the strategic plan. We only have one board level committee currently from the six goals in our strategic plan. Much like the U.S. Constitution is the backbone of our, of our society, we need to follow the strategic plan, or we need to change it. Three, as a member mentioned last meeting, EDI was ranked as high as fourth, but in past years, we have adopted strategic plan, student safety, supportive environment, and academic performance have constantly and consistently ranked higher, but we have no board level meeting for, uh, board level committee for any of them. And you think about it, you know, there was a murder, not anywhere in New Hanover County, but, you know, not, not too far, two hours up the road, we had guns on our campuses last year, we had a shooting on our campus, but we don't have a school level, a board level, uh, safety committee. Two boards, two boards ago, we had several works. Two boards, uh, two boards ago, we had several work sessions led by one of our current members. Um, we had discussions about all the board level committees. They were all looked at and Legislative Committee was actually developed. And if you will remember, um, you know, that in the 2020 budget, our superintendent passed a budget that did not have any chief EDI officer, but was redirected to submit a budget that did contain that. And to speak to, uh, a, a motion or a, a comment that was made last night, and then again, just, I took some time today and looked through. Big 12, uh, Pitt County does not have an EDI committee. Anzal County, which is the closest of the Big 12 to us, no. Robertson County, I don't believe so. Vacumbi County, no. Cabarrus, no. Gassen County, no. Pitt County under construction. Uh, Aradell, no. Harnett, no. Uh, Davidson, no. Catawba, no. So, uh, the, the comment that the lady made last night, I'm not sure if that was factual or not, that the top of the Big Five, uh, the Big 12 actually do, that could be, but uh, out of the Big 12, the ones that are closest to us in size do not have an EDI committee. So just to let you know, you know, I'm just presenting the facts on that one. Ms. Craybill.
Point of order. I haven't spoken.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I did not know. Yes, ma'am. You're speaking then, Ms. Craybill speaks. Second time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have brought up concerns from the beginning and have been vocal about the concern about the focus on the outcome versus input. Um, when I asked to have a work session discussion, I openly said, there are things when we discuss equitable opportunities that we can do with or without using the word that I have supported. One of the things that I believe, this is just from memory, that our board passed, but we unanimously said that we were going to write it into policy to ensure that we had multiple language access to every single translation of texts and email and calls that were going out. So that was something that we were cognizant of and it's because the awareness of our populations that we serve. And I agree with that. We have said multiple times that the work is being done by people already in charge. So Dr. Faust has a principal roundtable, classified staff. He's got a student council, now a parental involvement advisory committee that he gets and gleaned input from, that these people help make decisions that run our school district. So I, I understand the sentiment because there was a lot of passion in 2020, 2019, when this committee was created, um, and the heavy emphasis on race and sexuality. I mean, if we back up to the inception of where we were. I openly expressed frustration with that narrow focus. Two months ago, I brought up saying, after hearing a demonstration from our staff, this is what we are required to submit to the state and federal. I said, in my mind, that is the scope and lens that we need to be evaluating how we are doing things and looking at those demographics. I expressed that and was openly criticized and questioned by it. The reality is because we have not been able to work together and to have conversations, this is why we're at the point here of making a decision tonight. Um, so I do support, I'm going to be open about this, realigning the strategic plan, and I'm asking for the board tonight to consider having Dr. Faust and team reevaluate based on those demographics that we have to submit to the state and federal level. And if there's anything that, there is a recommendation of changing, I think it should be brought forth before the board as well.
Ms. Craybill, and just to let you know, we have two minutes left.
I can get this in a minute. Um, the first thing, um, I just want to make a note, when this committee was started in 2019, Lisa Eastep, Republican, David Wortman, Republican, um, Jeanette Nichols, Republican, Bill Rivenbach, Republican. Um, Lisa and David were chair and vice chair at that time. Nelson Bullier and Judy Justice were also on the committee. There was a, there was a unanimous vote that we needed to put some concentration on it. We weren't talking about sexuality. We were talking about sexual misconduct at that time. And I also too just want to, to bring forth is that our board protocol says that our board committees are advisory and therefore they have no, um, they have no authority. But we have upheld within this board the sanctity of that, that we listen to the recommendation of committees and we act upon them. So Ms. Mason is bringing forth her own personal recommendation. She's not bringing forth a recommendation from the committee. And I just want us to think about that. If we're going to, if we're going to seek advisory, seek information in an advisory capacity, then we owe it to the people to at least listen. And part of that is answer the questions, um, as best we can. Um, perhaps not all the details. We probably, we don't have all of those. We don't have to create reports to satisfy, you know, um, people's, people's requests. But we do, I think, owe it to committees to discuss things with them.
All right. We have a motion and a second in front of us to disband the EDI Committee. Uh, Ms. Bull, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Chair, but before she does--
Yes, sir.
Just as a, a matter of clarification, because, uh, Policy 2230 called Board Committees lists the EDI Committee as one of the standing committees, it, it wasn't mentioned in Ms. Mason's motion, but is the motion understood to change the language in that policy?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Point of order.
Yes, ma'am.
Is our attorney part of this board?
No.
He cannot make those recommendations. He can talk to us in closed session, but I don't believe that that was an appropriate comment.
Ms. Craybill, I think he was advising me so that we have this properly done.
He was advising Ms. Mason to change her motion.
He was said, he, I'm not arguing.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second in front of us.
Would you read it?
Motion is to dissolve the EDI Committee as of January 1st, 2024, and to change the language in--
Are you adding that, Ms. Mason? That's not part of her motion.
I'd like to amend my motion--
Thank you.
--to change policy as it pertains to this.
Could you read your motion again with all of that written?
Please hold. As a whole, I make a motion to dissolve the EDI Committee as of January 1st, 2024, with the change to Policy 2230 to be made at the next policy meeting.
Second. You have a first and second on that? So I guess, let, let me ask Mr. Vogel. Uh, we would need to, um, discuss, discuss the amendment and then the thing, or just as a whole?
She made a motion, it was to amend, it's been seconded, so the discussion is on the amendment, on the amended--
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Ms. Craybill.
I would like to amend the motion to say that we table the vote on the EDI Committee until such time as the Policy Committee reviews policy on board committees.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion of that? If not, Ms. Bull, so this is to, uh, Ms. Craybill's motion to table this motion until, as she provided, uh, the Policy Committee can, uh, change--
I have one pointed discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
That was not brought up at all when the Title IX Committee was brought forth per, uh, my board members' request to do that. And so I don't understand why this is similar fashion.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. The, um, I brought it up for discussion. I didn't bring it up for a vote. And we tabled the discussion and you told me it was going to be on this agenda and it was not. And I asked you and Dr. Faust twice, could we have a report so that we could talk about it? Because I know that we have to change that policy and so I never asked for a vote. I gave, I talked, I wanted to talk about it. So that is not equal and it's not the same.
Ms. Bull, would you, this is again on the, the, uh, motion to table. Please call the roll.
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Mr. Wildebohr?
No.
Ms. Mason?
No.
And Ms. Craybill?
No. Oh, wait a minute. Yes. Table. Sorry.
Table. Okay.
A voting no.
That, that fails. Um, four to two. So we will carry on with the other motion that's in front of us. Would you please, you want me to read it? You can read it. Go ahead. Okay. This is the amendment, um, to change policy 2230 to be made at next policy meeting. Any discussion?
I listened to motion. The motion was the whole big long thing.
But this is, we're talking about the amendment. The amendment's separate. So, um, Ms. Bull, would you--
I don't get this. Mr. Vogel, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I just ask for clarification. The, the amendment, Ms. Mason's amendment to the, to the main motion is to do what? To Policy 2230?
To, with the change to poli, to, with, uh, with the change to Policy 2230 to be made at the next policy meeting. So basically to change the policy that is directly tied to policy.
But it doesn't say that. It doesn't say that.
It does say it right here.
She didn't say, she said to look at the policy. She didn't say what to do with it.
Thank you.
No, we have to be specific on this because we're taking away one of the most important things that we do.
Thank you. Mr. Vogel?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm, I personally, I'm having trouble understanding because i, i, is, is the intent to change the policy language today or is the intent to not change the policy language today?
Mason?
To my understanding, the process is that it goes through policy. I may be incorrect. So I was referring it to the Policy Committee so that they can make the necessary changes that reflect the motion.
Okay. I think I understand, Mr. Chairman, that the, that the motion to amend, the main motion, the main motion said to dissolve the EDI Committee and the amendment would be, and with respect to Policy 2300, to put it on the Policy Committee's next agenda.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Yep. Okay.
Can I ask a question to that, Mr. Vogel? So let's just say it comes to policy and we don't approve it, but we've already approved this. So the, we're again, we're putting the cart before the horse and we, and one of our policies says, I don't have time to look it up, I don't have my mouse and I'm not good with my hand thing, but one of our policies says that we are not allowed to, um, change policies when we add it to the agenda. It has to be noticed. So if we are going to, again, we're back at trying to approve something before it's written down. So I object to that added motion. I think that the, um, we'll have to just address that separately.
Ms. Barnhart?
I'd like to speak to that point, Mr. Chairman. We are not changing the policy on the dais in the motion. The interpretation is to bring that policy to committee, at which time we and the Policy Committee will take care of that. So it is not changing the policy right now. I do, I do agree with my colleague that we are not allowed to put something on the agenda and, and change the policy at the same time. That is not what is happening. There has been a motion to terminate a committee and then also in turn update the policy in a future meeting.
All right. So we have a motion and a second in front of us to, uh, I'll read the whole motion again. I make a motion to dissolve, or the motion is made, dissolve the EDI Committee as of January 1st, 2024, with the change to Policy 2230 to be made at the next policy meeting. We have a first and a second. Ms. Bull, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
And Ms. Craybill?
No. Not following the rules.
That passes four to two. Um, that is passed.
Yes.
Yeah, that was the whole thing.
Mr. Chair, I think, I think now you take up the main motion because that was, that was a motion to amend. The main motion.
Okay, that was a motion to amend. All right. So let's go through that again. So the whole motion, as I read, uh, the motion is made to dissolve the EDI Committee as of January 1st, 2024, with the change to Policy 2230 to be made at the next policy meeting. Ms. Bull, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
And Ms. Craybill?
No.
Okay. Again, passes four to two. We will carry on with old business seeing we have none. Uh, correspondence. Anyone have any correspondence to share? Ms. Bradford, I mean, Ms. Barnhart, excuse me?
I have one. I just want to say thank you. Um, there were school meals for all, had extended invitation to us to come to, uh, Paint and Advocacy Night, and so I was able to attend and speak with the directors there. We actually have two school ambassadors, one at Laney and one at New Hanover High School. Um, they are both in the process of doing a food drive, but I just want to say thank you again for the invitation and proud of our students for that.
Ms. Craybill, that's your hand up?
Yes. Um, I wanted to take time to thank everybody, um, in the community who has taken their time, um, and to provide us with their insights on many of the things that we have been discussing of late, in particular, um, their voice on equity, diversity, and inclusion. I wanted to, um, say congratulations to our new officers and encourage them to take the Nonpartisan Board Officers Training Academy that the NC, NC SBA is offering on January the 18th. And I also want to commend our school district, um, and Tanya Jordan, I think, I think she's still an employee, but if she's not, she's listening. Um, the, with, um, for taking the lead on getting the Darkness to Light class. Um, I attended that class at one of our high schools. Um, it was very informative and I would hope that, um, the board would reconsider my request to have us all sit through that training and any of the other trainings that our staff are taking in order to make the, our students' lives better.
Thank you, Ms. Craybill. Ms. Bradford?
I can't find it. Um, I don't know if Dr. Fason is still on, but perhaps Dr. Faust can help us. We have some specialty school, um, open house coming and the, the date, it's in January, but I just wanted to, to, to put that out there. Dr. Fason, are you still on? Does anyone else in the district have that information? I just can't pull it up.
I, I'm sorry. I was trying to, I'm still on, um--
The specialty school information, uh, the date and, and what's happening with the, what is it, eight different schools?
Yeah, so we actually have a specialty fair for our specialty schools, our year-round school, tech and those specialty schools. And it's January the 20th. It will be at the BOE from 10 to 1 for all of our parents to come out and the wonderful options that we have.
Thank you, Dr. Fason. Thank you.
10 to 1, specialty school fair.
Yes. Um, I, I have one more thing. This is our last board meeting before the end of the year and I just have three little words of wisdom. The mouth should have three gatekeepers. Is it true? Is it kind? And is it necessary?
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? If not, uh, some announcements. The Curriculum Committee will be, be held on Monday, December 11th, uh, 2023 at 3:45 in the Board of Education Center. The general public will have an option to view remotely on the New Hanover County TV YouTube. Policy Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, December 12th, 2023 at 1 o'clock at the Board of Education Center. Again, the general public will have the option to view remotely, uh, on the New Hanover County TV YouTube.
Also, the networking legislative lunch on the 13th as well.
Okay. The networking legislative lunch on 13th here at the Board of Education. Uh, anything else? If not, um, because of time, we will not have a closed session today. We will have to put, postpone that until next month and--
Do we have to vote on that since it's on the agenda and we approved it?
But it said, if, it says if needed. Do we do? Okay. Yeah.
I was nodding my head. I agree with you. It says if needed.
Thank you. Okay. Um, so at that point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
First and second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.